You are watching Access La Porte County Channel ninety-seven. Coming up next is the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our December nineteenth meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. We ask that you silence all electronic devices, stand forward to pleasurable allegiance to the flag, and sign a prayer.
Put allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
And the visible liberty of its law.
Ms. Niall, on the roll call, please.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Mack.
Present.
Ms. Dyche.
Present.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Present.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky. Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Dr. Cora.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have eight present and one absent.
All right, we have a quorum. So are we moving on without approval of the minutes, correct?
Correct. They'll be ready at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Reports of.
I want to move to make an amendment to the to the agenda.
Okay.
Move to add to correspondence, the communications or right after petitions, the veto letters that we received from the mayor, and to add the additional resolutions to the end of our resolutions.
It was suggested that we do it between public comment and council comment, the resolutions.
Oh, so after unfinished business, after unfinished business or between, let me fix that.
Yeah.
Let me clean it all the way up. So for the second part of that, that we remove it, those resolutions between public
Yeah.
and and city council comments. And will the publicly able to comment on those resolutions?
So that's a.
This is a resolution, so they should be able to comment. So that's why. So I'll move them to right before public comment.
Correct. There we go.
All right. That's my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
For.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilwoman Dyche to amend the agenda and seconded by Councilwoman Tillman. Ms. Niall, will you vote, please?
Mr. Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Dyche.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
We have any favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Niall. Reports of standing committees.
Yeah, Mr. President. Yeah, being the liaison to the Laporte County Solid Waste District, I'd like to report on our last Wednesday meeting that we had, and there's some changes coming up at the district. Probably the most important one that the public needs to be made aware of is that the countywide recycling contract has been changed from Republic Services Waste to Borden Waste Away, and they are from Elkhart, Indiana. And what they plan on doing, they'll be starting January the first, and they are going to be mailing out to all the residents of Laporte County between now and the first, a packet to everyone detailing the program and any information that you may need to have a seamless transition from one company to the next. The other thing that I found out today is that this company here, and I'm sure it has to do with the amount of travel that they have to do and the work hours, but they're going to be starting at five AM in the morning, coming through the city at five AM in the morning, and we'll see how that works out. So I just want to pass that information on to the folks that are here tonight, the other council members, and there's information coming down. There was a little blip in the newspaper today, but this mailing packet is going to have all the information, contact numbers, what have you about the transition that will be taking place. Also, with the district, we approved the purchase of a new pickup truck for forty-seven thousand dollars and what's called a Trummell compost grinder. We we didn't purchase it yet, but we're taking bids in order to purchase it, and that'll cost somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. And then the highlight of the meeting is that we gave the employees of the Solid Waste District a five percent raise for next year. So I just wanted to pass that information on to everybody on the council and in the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other reports from standing committees? Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The City of Michigan City Finance Committee meeting did not meet this evening. Starting off with the Michigan City Riverboat and Boyd's Claim Docket for December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, Riverboat Fund Number Two Two Three Five, four hundred forty-six thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars, ninety-five cents. Riverboat E F T Fund Number Two Two Three Five, zero dollars. Boyd Development Fund E F T Two Five Zero Four, zero dollars. Total claims, four hundred forty-six thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars, ninety-five cents. Those claims is for Holiday Construction Group, one hundred thirty-five dollars, thousand, nine hundred ninety-two dollars, forty-three cents. Laporte Chrysler Inc., one hundred thirty-three thousand, two hundred twenty-nine dollars, fifty-two cents. And McCay Industries, Inc., one hundred seventy-six thousand, nine hundred twenty-four dollars. Again, total claims for four hundred forty-six thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. The City of Michigan City Statement of Cash Position, fiscal year to date, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, unexpended balance is six million, four hundred eighty-one thousand, nine hundred twenty-one dollars, forty-five cents.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Claims docket, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, Fund Twenty Two Thirty Five Riverboat Claims in the amount of four hundred forty-six thousand, one hundred forty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. E F T zero, Fund Twenty Five Zero Four Boyd Development, zero dollars. E F T zero for total claims in the amount of four hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred forty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the claims.
Support. A motion to approve by Councilman Preswellinsky and seconded by Councilman Dabney. Ms. Niall, on the vote, please.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Dyche.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
And Mr. Cora.
Aye.
Dr. Cora, I'm sorry. Eight in favor and no one, uh, no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Niall. Reports from boards and commissions. Reports, special or select committees. Reports from mayor or other city officers and departments. No. All right, you guys are making this too easy. Petitions.
There are no petitions this evening.
Hey, we have next.
Correspondence.
Correspondence.
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on December fifteenth from Mayor Dwayne Perry regarding his veto on Resolution Number Four Nine O Six. Did you want to move forward on this before I go?
These are the ones we amended the agenda to add.
One nine oh six. Okay, um, this is, um. All right, I move that we override the veto for the review, I mean, of the Resolution Four Nine Zero Six, which is the the letter that we received from Mr. Dwayne Perry for the Vibrant Michigan City Plan. And this was the resolution for the the change to the American Rescue Plan.
We have a motion to override the veto of Resolution Four Nine Zero Six. Is there a second? Okay, we have a second by Council, Councilman Simmons. Ms. Niall, on the vote, please. Just as a point of order, I would note that we do have these listed in unfinished business. So we just want to make it clear that this is the agenda item that's also listed in unfinished business. It was there. It's just coming up in a different.
Oh, okay, so it is in there. We stood up. Well, so we made a change to the agenda.
Right.
Because we usually do it, excuse me, Mr. President, just talking out of turn.
It's parliamentary. We'll give you that.
All right, typically, we do it during communications when we receive the letter.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we're clear between the agenda and what's actually happening. So. Just put the difference aside. Yeah. Okay, thank you for the point of our attorney's note. So we have a motion.
All right, Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Present.
We're voting on.
We're voting to.
Okay, all right.
Other discussion, and it would not be proper for me to throw it.
Okay.
I believe that's also in the, not the minutes, but the Rose Book. I think it's in Robert's order.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Dyche.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
And Dr. Cora.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one oppose, uh, no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Niall.
Okay, the next one is correspondence was received in the clerk's office on December fifteenth regarding from Mayor Perry regarding his veto to ordinance number four seven one eight.
And just to, can I move forward?
Yeah.
Before I make the the motion for the veto, I did receive a letter in reference to this veto from Jim Clarida, President of the Laporte Stark Palaski Building Trades Council, from their attorney Johnson and Crowell. And if I could read it in its entirety.
Please do.
Responsible bidder ordinances in Michigan City. You recently contacted our office, and I did. For the purpose of securing a legal opinion, I reached out to Jim Clarida, and he reached out to them for the use of RBOs generally, and the recent veto of the proposed ordinance by the mayor of Michigan City, Indiana. By way of background, the firm of Johnson and Crowell is a boutique labor law firm in Chicago. As we specialize in labor law, we are very familiar with the uses and purposes of RBOs. In general, the purpose of RBOs is to ensure that construction projects are performed in accordance with community standards and the law. RBOs are an acknowledgement that considerations other than cost are relevant on public construction projects. For example, RBOs typically require such as proof of participation in apprenticeship training programs, proof of certificates of insurance, pre-qualification surveys, and compliance with all state, local state, and federal laws. RBOs increase transparency for the taxpayer and ensure a level playing field for all bidders. The number of RBOs enacted in Illinois and Indiana has doubled since the year twenty-ten, from roughly seventy-four in twenty-ten to over a hundred and thirty in twenty-twenty. The Illinois Economic Policy Institute recently analyzed twelve thirty-seven, one thousand two hundred thirty-seven Illinois, Illinois and Indiana public project projects and found that RBOs encourage more bid competition and had no impact on total construction costs. In other words, there's no measurable downside to RBOs. You recently forwarded a December fifteen, twenty twenty-three letter from the Michigan City, Indiana Mayor, Dwayne Perry vetoing a proposed RBO for Michigan City, Indiana. In his letter, Mayor Perry rationalized that the reason for his vote veto was that the RBO would hurt small contractors and would violate Indiana's right to work laws. In short, the RBO, in his opinion, would have exposed Michigan City to legal liability if it were enacted. It is unclear how Mayor Perry reached either of those conclusions, as there is no explanation in the letter. As to small contractors, RBOs are designed designed to level the playing field for all bidders. With that in mind, an RBO will only aid small contractors in the bidding process against larger contractors. His opinion that the RBO violates right to work law is even more puzzling. Rights to work laws imply simply ensure that union membership can never be used as a condition of employment in the states that have enacted them. They have nothing to do with the substantive terms of bidding on public construction projects. Accordingly, the reasoning upon which the mayor's decision is based does not appear to be well-founded. It is my sincere hope that this letter addresses your inquiry. RBOs are generally designed to maintain quality standards and transparency on public projects. With that in mind, Mayor Perry's conclusions regarding the effect of enacting a RBO in Michigan City appear to be mistaken. If you have any other questions or comments on this matter, please contact me, and the information is included. So I I move to override the veto ordinance forty-seven eighteen.
Second, um, can, Mr. President, Councilman, can I respond?
Yes.
Yeah, and what Councilwoman Dyche said, if she, you know, read the response letter from the attorney, what I want to do is read the letter of the veto from the mayor so that the public understands why he did what he did without any real strong legal background or state law or anything. Just, so let me go ahead and read it. Dear Members of the Council, after review of ordinance forty-seven eighteen, which was passed by the council on December fifteenth, I hereby inform you that I have vetoed this ordinance for the following reasons. I feel strongly that passage of this ordinance creates an unlevel playing field for small contractors. Okay, there's no proof of that. Desiring to do business with the city of Michigan City, putting them at a great disadvantage. There's no proof of that. Personally, more important, it brings liability to Michigan City. There's no proof of that, and that it violates Indiana statute on the right to work law. And there's no proof to that. And speaking to the council attorney today, he said he researched it, and he agrees with that. So there is no basis for which the mayor can stand besides saying that it's his philosophy, his personal philosophy, and everybody's entitled to that, but it's only his personal philosophy and his authority as the mayor to veto it, which he does have the right to veto it. Understand that. But there's no legal basis to veto what we voted for with the RBO. So I just wanted to pull the public to understand that also. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. You have a comment?
Yeah, I have a comment to the resolution. After, you know, reading the letter from the attorney and my own position is that, my position is this. As I've been a union member for over fifty years, an active union member, and that the basis of unions is to have the right to sit down at the table to discuss problems in the workforce, in the workplace, whether it be wages or safety. And that I think that all of the comments that the mayor made on his philosophy is one, to me, as I interpret it, as he's anti-union. And unions are a good thing. A lot of people do not like them. They do not like paying the union dues, but as far as I can say, is I've been involved with demonstrations or protests, demonstrations on, number one, the ERA, and the also against the Bailey Station. Our local was heavily involved with making sure that it wasn't built where they planned on building it. And also, the demonstration on Three Mile Island, where the President of the United States wanted to dump the water into the river. A lot of people probably have forgotten a lot of those things, but unions are good. And I think that, like I said, Mr. Perry's philosophy is that he's anti-union. And I believe that strongly, just like with our negotiations with our unions in Michigan City, that I believe that his comments have been anti-union. And I will vote in affirmative to override that veto. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. We have a motion and a second to override veto, I mean, override veto ordinance forty-seven eighteen. Ms. Niall, on the vote, please.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Dyche.
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Niall. Can you continue with communications?
A notice of a tort claim was received in the clerk's office on December fourth, twenty twenty-three regarding an incident that took place on November ninth, twenty twenty-three. And correspondence was received in the clerk's office from Scott Mallon on December eighth, twenty twenty-three regarding the sign-on bonus for the Michigan City Police Department.
Thank you, Ms. Niall. Can you please read our first resolution by title only?
A resolution by title only, opposing the reduction in staffing at the Coast Guard Station in Michigan City and making said station part-time station. And this is introduced by Ms. Dyche, Mr. Simmons, Mr. Don Preswellinsky, and Ms. Tillman.
Any comments from the sponsors?
Yes, this is in reference, there were several articles and several things that have been brought to a couple of our attention about the Coast Guard Station here in Michigan City. There was some information that came out that talked about closing of several Coast Guard stations across the United States. But Michigan City is on the list as is transitioning to a a part-time station. So if I could read this in its entirety, if that's okay.
Yes, please.
Opposing the reduction in staffing at the Coast Guard Station, Michigan City, and making said station a part-time station. Whereas the Coast Guard Station, Michigan City, hereinafter referred to a C G S, Michigan City, has been in operation since eighteen eighty-eight and is located at the mouth of Trail Creek at Ten on the Lake, Michigan City, Indiana. And whereas the C S G, Michigan City, mission includes search and rescue, law enforcement, homeland security, marine environmental protection, and training and rescue operations on the ice in the winter months. And whereas, due to workforce shortfalls, the city has learned that the C S G, Michigan City, is planning to become a part-time facility with the exception of weekends before the next boating season due to the reduction in staffing. And whereas, as a matter of public, of health and safety, and to protect the residents and visitors of the city, the Common Council reasonably believes that the C S G, Michigan City, location should not become a part-time facility. And whereas, the Common Council believes it would be prudent to keep the station staff full-time year-round because if it's critical positioning on Lake Michigan and a considerable distance to other Coast Guard stations in Chicago, Illinois, and Saint Joseph, Michigan. And whereas, the Common Council urges the Coast Guard to consider its position with the C S G, Michigan City, location, keep this location as a full-time facility at all times. Now therefore be resolved by the Common Council of Michigan City, Indiana, as follows. The aforementioned whereas sections are incorporated herein as if fully set forth herein. The City of Michigan City, Indiana opposes the reduction in staffing at the C G S, Michigan City, and the Coast Guard's intention to make the C S G, Michigan City, a part-time facility. The city reasonably believes that making the station a part-time facility may have an adverse impact on the health and safety of the city residents and visitors herein. The city request, number three, the city requests that C G S, Michigan City, remain a full-time station. Number four, the city clerk is directed to forward a copy of this resolution to the following. The Coast Guard Station at Michigan City, Congressman Frank J. Marvan's office, the U.S. Coast Guard Office in Washington, D.C. This resolution shall be in full force and effect after passage by the Michigan City Common Council and approval by the mayor. And I am hoping that the rest of the council members would, would ask to be added as sponsors so that we can send this up to our congressman to support it.
Thank you. Is there any objection to everyone being added as sponsors?
No.
No.
Okay.
We're all in. Thank you. Any other comments from the sponsors?
I have a question, and I know that we have the congressman on here, but I don't know personally if the U.S. Senate has anything to do with Coast Guard. I know the U.S. Senate deals with the railroads, and the Congress doesn't. So are we sure that Congress? I mean, why can't we send a letter to our U.S. Senator?
We can. All of the correspondence that I received was through the congressman's office. All the back and forth Yeah. was between that office and and the appropriation. So I don't know. I think it came through Congress, not Senate, but the House. It came through the House. That's why all the back and forth was between the House. So I I don't know the logistics of.
I'm just.
But we can. I think we can send it.
But I think I think we should just move forward and send a letter to U.S. Senator Braun and let him know how Michigan City feels about this also.
Yeah. Yeah, and I guess we don't have to amend the resolution, but what we can do is, I think I have the contacts for both of those offices that we can send it.
No problems.
Any other comments from the sponsors?
Yeah, I just have an overall comment on this. When I, when I read about it in the, in the newspaper, I was thoroughly shocked. And I'm sure all the residents of Michigan City were thoroughly shocked. The boaters, the fishermen, anybody that uses the lakefront. To me, it's like taking a fire department and making them work part-time throughout the city. Police departments will say, hey, just work part-time, right? You don't have to work full-time because we're not worried about anything after hours or what have you. To me, this is a serious, very serious situation. Everyone in this room, everyone in Michigan City, understands the importance of the Coast Guard on that lakefront. They need to be there. They have to be there. So I thoroughly support this resolution and any other support or movement we need to make our congressman and U.S. Senator aware of the urgency to keep this a full-time Coast Guard Station.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the sponsors?
Mr. President, I fully agree with the sentiments that have already been expressed, and I think this Coast Guard Station has been here for a century, and it has served, served us all well, and it has, it adds to the safety and security of our community, and so I fully support this, and we should add both the Senators, Senator Braun and Senator Young to this communication. Thank you.
Councilman Dab.
Yeah, looking at this in the third, whereas, where they're talking about why they're doing this, it says due to workforce shortfalls. I think we should be asking Congress Marvan and those guys if they can have the funding to to get over that workforce shortfalls. Maybe they need to pay more or whatever benefits or anything like that to bring more people in, just like we do with our lifeguards out here at the Washington Park Beach. So I think we should be asking if they could solve that issue rather than just turn it in and say we're in support of keeping this thing open. You know, say, is there some type of plan for you guys to fix this workforce shortfall?
Thank you, Councilman Dab. Councilman Preswellinsky.
I, I'm concerned about the fact that Coast Guard serves a safety purpose and that I believe that our, I believe that we should be sending information to our, the whole congressional delegation in Senate, in Congress in in this resolution because that is a funding process and, you know, like, has been stated before. This coasters, this Coast Guard Station has served the community, and it serves the whole, you know, a big, big region. So Michigan City has a lot of boating going on, and I think that, you know, it is like Councilman Don Preswellinsky stated.
you, you know, it is like Councilman Don Presbleinsky stated, it's, it's, it's like the fire and police station. Uh, it is a public safety network and I just can't believe that they're leaving that. You know, if, if you look at, they have districts, you know, and this is like, I believe the nearest one is in, um, Saint Joe. You're, you're leaving a hole in, in the network. It's like closing down a fire station. You're leaving a hole in the response network. So I think that we should, I, I personally and truly believe that we should send it to all the congressional and Senate for the state and make them aware, hey, this is a real problem. Uh, besides that, you know, there's commerce that goes on and if besides boating enjoyment and relaxation, it's commerce that goes on in the southern end of Lake Michigan. There's a lot of boat, big transport boats that are coming through and coming up and docking in the different, uh, corporations on Lake Michigan. I think it's very, it very important details. So that's my take on it and I, I think that we should expand it um, in the resolution, um, sending it to all the congressional and senate delegation for the, from the state or at least the northern part of the state. So I'll make that as a, uh, a comment to, uh, you know, I, I didn't write anything up on it, you know?
Our state, state.
No, I'm talking about the, oh, they don't have anything in to deal with that federal. I'm talking about the federal level, right?
The Indiana, right?
And the senate, senators, to make them aware of, you know, what's going on. Cause see that, the district, they'll, they're making the cut. They may not even be aware of it. Cause all they do is vote on the funding mechanism. That, that's all, that's all they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman Presbleinsky.
No.
Uh, I, I'd just like to really quickly echo all the sentiments from everyone else. And I do think we should reach out far and wide to make everyone aware of, you know, our concerns as far as, uh, what, what we think is necessary for, for our lakefront and just personally from uh, being a former deputy coroner and doing depth investigations, when there's a search and rescue or a recovery situation, Coast Guard has always been critical and we've had to work hand-in-hand with them and DNR as long as with our, as well as with our local, uh, rescue teams to, to make those necessary, um, recovery. So it, it's definitely something critical for our lakefront with the amount of tourists that we have annually and just the amount of people that frequent that lakefront. So I totally support this. Uh,
I got one other quick comment. You know, the boat that's stationed out here, I don't think people realize the technology that's in that boat and the rough water that that boat can handle. And, and that boat has actually, you know, can, it can actually roll over and upright itself. And it, when you're doing a re- rescue in rough water, uh, I don't know exactly how long it would take somebody to get here from the Chicago district, cause I think that's the closest one. And then, uh, Saint Joe. And, uh, it, this is critical, you know? Now you got a lot of boat, you have got a lot of boating people uh, here and it's all, uh, and, you know, it's, it's a, um, how can I say this? We got a lot of boating in our community. We always have. I think it's an asset that we have to be in one hundred percent, uh, alerted to and get them alerted to it. You know, cause I mean, geez. It, it's, I can't even believe that they're doing that. Thank you.
Right, uh, anyone from the public wish to comment on this resolution?
Actually, yes. Scott Mallon, two hundred and ten with place. I would point out that, um, the recently passed United States, um, Defense Act is eight hundred and fifty-eight billion dollars. I believe the Coast Guard is a branch of the military, so I don't think funding should be an issue. I would absolutely have us contact every legislator, uh, involved in our district, both at the state level and the federal level. And I would point out to them, the nearest station is, I think, Chicago. That's approximately thirty nautical miles away. That's at least an hour response time. This station is also responsible for the Port of Indiana. And last point, this is probably the only Coast Guard installation in the state of Indiana. I think these are all good points that we could press our leadership in Congress to fight for. It is a life safety issue and as the Coast Guard's mission states, uh, homeland security is an issue given the Port of Indiana and the commerce and large ships to go there. So anything we can do to, uh, make that known would be, would be good. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, anyone else from the public wish to speak? Any other, uh, comments from the council?
Move for adoption?
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Presbleinsky, uh, Councilman Don Presbleinsky. Ms. Nyalob on the vote, please?
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Mack?
Hi.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Dr. Cora?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky?
Definitely aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyalob. Can you please read our next resolution by title only?
A resolution by title only, a resolution increasing and decreasing certain appropriations within the budget of City Paul's of the General Fund one-one-zero-one for the year twenty twenty-three in Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Ms. Tillman.
Any comments from the sponsors?
Yes.
Councilman Dabney?
Uh, this is a simple cleanup at the end of the year, uh, decreasing, uh, one line item, uh, within the general fund to, to, uh, nineteen hundred dollars, nineteen hundred forty dollars and increasing another line, uh, sick buyback by nineteen hundred forty dollars just to cover a shortfall.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Tilden?
And I'd just like to add on to that, um, due to that we didn't have our finance committee meeting, but I did ask the question, um, just for clarity that this sick buyback was for, um, for the maintenance staff and in the fu- in the future that the controller's office will hopefully put something in place to where it's budgeted. It's not taken from, but it will be budgeted in case of, if they decide if any of these staffs will be, um, doing any buybacks with any sick days that they have remaining by the end of the year. That they, that it wouldn't be a shortfall to where they would have to come before us for an appropriation.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, anyone from the public wish to speak? Any comments from the council?
Move for adoption?
Support.
We have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilwoman Tillman. Um, Ms. Nyalob on the vote, please?
Mr. Mack?
Hi.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Dr. Cora?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyalob. Can you please read our next, uh, resolution by title only?
A resolution by title only approving and authorizing an extension of the inter-local government agreement between the city and the Michigan City Area Schools for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. And this is introduced by Mr. Simmons and Ms. Deitch.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deitch?
Yeah, this is in, in reference to our resource officers, um, that we have, um, at the school system. And I wanted to make sure the attachment aid. Um, it, it was to, uh, make sure that we, uh, when we did this, that we also reflected the increase um, in salaries with the, the police department as well. Um, and I didn't see this printed, but I do have that. We all received it. But I just wanted to make sure that, um, this is what we've always done, um, every two years to make sure that we, um, did our extension. Uh, so this is just an update to support, um, and reflect, you know, the increases that we've also had in, in how we're reimbursed from the school. So there is an increase in how much they're, they're giving us. So, but I, I didn't see it in here. I was trying to see if I could find it. But it's nothing out of the ordinary. It's, it's one of our standard, um, agreements that we've had with them for the last, I don't know, over a de- about a decade. So, um, but it's for our resource officers.
And it was approved yesterday at the Board of Works meeting?
Yes, and it was approved at the Board of Works yesterday.
Any other comments from the sponsors?
I just, I just feel that it's imperative that we continue having a working relationship with the Michigan City Area School in regards to the resource officers. Uh, they play a very vital role in the safety of our young people. And they also, uh, uh, play a major role in working with the staff.
Thank you, Councilman. I, I did find the amount, so if I could share that. Each year, um, the school shall pay to the city for one school resource officer to the total sum of one hundred thousand dollars. Or if two school resource officers are provided, the cost shall increase to a hundred and fifty thousand and shall be paid in three equal installments on the following dates each year. So, um, just so, so that the public knows that the school is supporting the, um, payment for these officers, which is a good thing. It shows a great partnership. And it's not, it's not a cheap, you know, thing that they're doing. They really want to make sure that, um, they continue the program.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Oh, we have one on one. Mr. Kalavich?
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen O- Ohio Street. Uh, the school resource officer at the Michigan City Area Schools, that's a very traditional and well-established possession we have within our schools and our city. I know a lot of great men and women have held that possession, including gr- uh, James Simmons. I believe that goes all the way back to the DARA program in the eighties. And I think that could continue on for, for, for as long as we're around. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kalavich. Any comments from the council?
And Mr. President, uh, I know that Councilwoman Deitch mentioned the a hundred and fifty thousand and I think it's been a hundred and fifty thousand for a couple of years. Yeah, yeah. Uh, I, uh, in a couple of years, when this comes around again, I think, uh, possibly we should study it. You know, that we raise the fee a little bit. I think it's been a hundred and fifty thousand for a number of years. So, yeah.
Even the hundred thousand?
Pardon?
Any other comments from the, uh, council, uh, Dr. Cora?
Yeah, Ms. President, uh, having served on the school board, um, uh, several years ago, I feel that this is a very important arrangement that helps, uh, the school system and our community and, uh, I strongly support it.
Thank you, Dr. Cora. Councilwoman Deitch?
Move for adoption?
Support.
We have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Dabney. Um, Ms. Nyalob on the vote, please?
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Presbleinsky?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Dr. Cora?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
And Mr. Mack?
Hi.
Nine in favor and.
Thank you, Ms. Nyalob. Can you please read our next resolution by title only?
A resolution increasing and decreasing certain appropriations within the budget of the Michigan City Promise Scholarship Fund twenty-three twelve for the year twenty twenty-three in Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Mr. Don Presbleinsky.
Any comments from the sponsors?
Yeah, Mr. President, what this was is the, uh, Promise Scholarship Director was given a raise, uh, but the raise never got into the, uh, line i- line item. So the raise is going to be coming out of the office supplies and being increased into the salaries and wages for twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Councilman. Any comments from the public?
I just wanted to.
Oh, Councilman.
Yeah, just piggyback on that, that this is not new money. It's a, the, the transfer within that, uh, department.
Thank you, Councilman. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council? Motion to approve?
Support.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Don Presbleinsky and seconded by Councilwoman Tillman. Ms. Nyalob on the vote, please?
Mr. Don Presbleinsky?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Mr. Uh, Dr. Cora?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Presbleinsky?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Mack?
Hi.
And Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyalob. Um, we have no ordinances. Moving on to new business, we have none. Unfazed business. Yeah, we already take care of those too. So we have a vote. The council has one appointment to the Michigan City Women's Commission. Term expires December twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, the incumbent, Ms. Veronica Martin. Uh, Angela Carter was nominated at the December fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting. Were there any other nominations?
No, there were not.
Do we need to vote on this?
Yeah, we just need to vote. We nominated it the last time.
That's, uh, Ms. Nyalob on the vote, please? Or do we, do we need to do a roll call?
We want to be in the voice, also.
Yeah.
We could have did.
You don't have anyone competing, so I think you could.
You only have one person.
Right.
Be by exclamation.
Just correct.
Give ayes. I mean.
Yeah, aye.
All in favor, all in favor, say aye.
My exclamation, aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Carter. Uh, the council has two appointments for the redevelopment commission representing the council. Term expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Incumbents Angela Nelson Deitch and Kathy Dennis. The following people were nominated at the December fifth, twenty twenty-three council meeting. Cherie Wilson, Paul Presblesky, Tracy Tillman. Uh, Mr. Snow, how would, uh, I think in the past we've done it where we'd say two names or how, what's, how do we do about individual? I don't recall.
I sure did two names. I am, yeah, I'm, so I think that, um, I suppose you, probably the easiest way would be to go through. Oh, I guess anybody can state one vote and then whoever has the least is eliminated. I don't know. Or you can state two names and see if they'll match up.
They all have to have five.
Yeah.
Whoever, they have to have majority vote.
Have to have a majority?
Right.
There's three people. We take the vote and who, you know, we'll see where it goes and then go back.
Oh, right. Keep going down. So I think you could, you could take a vote and then the least number is eliminated out and. Yeah.
And then go back.
Okay.
It is an order. I don't have it with me, but I have a paper I can vote.
If, I mean, I can find that probably.
The point or to the chair?
Councilman, uh, President Mesky?
Uh, are you gonna allow people to speak before you take the vote?
Hmm, uh, we can, if, uh, yeah, we have two present, I don't know.
Three?
Miss Wilson's.
Yeah, she's here. It's all three of them.
Okay, so, yeah, we can do that.
You can go ahead and do that.
Yep, we can start with, uh, yep, Ms. Wilson. Could you please come to the mic? Please state your name and.
My name is Cherie Wilson and I live at ten thirty Liberty Trail in Michigan City, Indiana. Um, the purpose of, the reason why I would like to take and go after this position on redevelopment commission is I have a strong history, um, work ethic of actually doing an alignment of what this act, this board actually does. My career is actually based off of program development, which is reaching out for funds, call for projects, all which is a part of, you know, developing the project, developing an area and also with the end goal of return on investment. In my past, I have worked for companies such as Advocate Healthcare in Chicago in doing multimillion-dollar fundings of future projects spanning over a five-year program. The state of Indiana done this exact same, developing programs for over ten years of development of infrastructure. Um, you know, sometimes we'd see those projects to fruition in both those situations. Uh, sometimes projects says funding wasn't available, but then have to go to the bottom of the docket and go back up through. So I understand the process and, um, also have a, a strong history of reaching out in contract negotiation and also reaching out to find and recruit, um, those who would like to invest in an area, you know, to produce, you know, growth. And so, um, I do feel that I have all the qualifications and if there's any questions that anyone would like to respond back to me with, uh, based on the resume I submitted, um, I'm more than willing to answer any questions for any. um, I'm more than willing to answer any questions for anyone. And I only dabbled a little bit in my past history, having us, you can, can see, also earlier when you guys were talking about, um, I will go a- along with this as well. Um, I'm also very familiar with, uh, pre-qualification bidding process, as you guys have been referenced to before. It's been a great success for the city of Chicago. I've also seen small companies such as Powers and Sons from Gary, Indiana, go from a very small mom and pop operation to their multimillion dollar company now. And that has been through that qualification program. So, um, I think, uh, I was so proud of you guys for re- 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 looking back on that, so. Uh, any questions about my qualifications in my past?
Um, not at this time, but thank you for, for your response.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Paul Prespolinski.
I'll leave a voting on that. Can I be excused?
Yes, sir.
Good evening. Paul Prespolinski, seventeen sixteen Washington Street. My, uh, service to the community speaks for itself. Over twenty-one and a half years of serving the public as an elected official and, uh, knowing the background of basically all the c- different commissions and committees and doing the research. When it's necess- when researching the issues and developing the facts. And my service speaks for itself as being on the finance committee, on the labor, uh, negotiating committee, negotiating contracts that as we see have brought to fruition. A fully staffed police department now. And also, I, uh, I take very serious the plans for Michigan City, just as in high regard, mounting a, uh, effort through different organizations in Michigan City, and I mean businesses, on the closing of the Coast Guard Station or making it a part-time station. Just today, I was talking to a owner of a marina today about trying to take advantage of some programs in Michigan City. And I, I believe that the redevelopment commission has a purpose also to help the neighborhoods better themselves and to help them to give them a bootstrap lift with infrastructure and different programs that can be done in our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Tillman?
Aye.
You, you don't have to approach the podium.
I would. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. As you all know, I am Tracy Tillman and I served the fifth ward, uh, the city of Michigan City, which is the east side. And as far as this being the end of my first term, um, I bring experience from being from an administrative, um, liaison for Lapeport County for the child support office of thirty-two years. So as in regards to dealing with fundings, I also sit on the city finance. And this is, um, the completion of my second year as chair. One of the things that I can say, um, being, um, voted for this position is that everyone that knows me, and if you don't, you will eventually find out. I analyze everything. Sometimes I overanalyze things. I'm very transparent. Um, I think that this is a very promising board to sit on, um, for the community as a whole also. Um, for the embodiment of the fifth ward for the east side of the city. So I would like to see a lot of these developments and the economic growth, um, for the whole city. But also focusing on the fifth ward as well in the process.
Thank you, Councilman.
All right, do you have, uh? I do, yes. I think we were all kind of circling around it. So Robert's rules suggest that, um, the preferred way to do it would be by ballot, but, um, we are in a public setting. I think we do have to do a voice vote. Um, so I think what happens is Ms. Nyleb will go down the line. Everybody states a candidate. If any candidate receives a majority, then that person is elected. And then you continue the ballot with the two remaining until somebody else receives a majority. So it's, it's not dropping one off. It's electing one and then.
Electing a second.
Yeah, then electing a second, yes. Yep.
Okay. I knew there was a possibility.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah.
Are we ready?
Yes, Nyleb on the vote, please.
Okay. Mr. Simmons?
Are we blaming for the first chair or what?
Whoever you wanna vote for.
Yeah, it's just two people, neither one.
No, just one at a, one at a time until five. One person gets five.
One person gets much bigger.
Correct. Cherie Wilson.
Dr. Cora?
Should I pick one or?
One.
One.
One, Cherie Wilson.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Cherie Wilson.
Ms. Tillman?
Cherie Wilson.
Mr. Davney?
Wilson.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Cherie Wilson.
Mr. Matt?
Wilson.
Ms. Deitch?
Wilson.
And Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Wilson.
We have nine for Ms. Wilson. So she gets the first one.
Congratulations, Ms. Wilson. Ms. Nyleb on the vote, please.
Well, that put her, so, okay, Dr. Cora.
Yeah, Tracy Tillman.
Uh, Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Tracy Tillman.
Um, Tracy Tillman.
Tracy Tillman.
Mr. Davney?
Tillman.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Tillman.
Mr. Matt?
Tillman.
Ms. Deitch?
Tillman.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Paul Prespolinski.
Mr. Simmons?
Tillman.
And we got Dr. Cora. We have one for Mr. Paul Prespolinski and a, for Ms. Tillman.
Congratulations, Ms. Tillman. Okay, do we have any comments from the public?
Were, were we gonna?
We're gonna do the.
Do the resolution?
Oh, yeah.
And then they, they're thinking of having on the resolutions, right?
That's right. So Ms. Nyleb, can you please read our first resolution?
Okay. A resolution by title only honoring Councilwoman Deitch for her commitment and service to the city of Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Mr. Davney, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Matt, Mr. Don Prespolinski, Mr. Simmons, Ms. Dr. Cora, uh, Mr. Paul Prespolinski and Ms. Tillman.
I got a question. Could we read one of those in its entirety? So then we'll just read the names of the rest, so at least the public will know what it says. I'll read it if you, if you have one ready. They just have everybody's name on it, so we'll, I'll say blank for the name. Or since we're reading the one for, uh, Councilwoman Deitch, we'll do that one first. Yeah.
Okay.
So honoring Councilwoman.
You can, you can mention all names and then we.
All right, now I gotta write them all down. Deitch.
I can go with love.
What's that? The, uh, all of the names?
Deitch.
Yeah.
You want me to just read it?
No, I'm ready now. Yeah.
We're doing, we're doing.
All right. All right. Give me some, uh, let me some slack, in case I fumble this one. So honoring Councilwoman Angie Nelson Deitch. Councilman Mac. Uh, uh.
Point of order.
My point of order is that now, I've, I personally do not want my resolution read tonight.
Okay.
I do not want Perry's name on my resolution. I would rather have Mayor-elect Deitch sign my resolution. Because I have my own reasons and my reason is big. It's just like an example tonight of his anti-union antics and antics through this whole administration. So I request that my resolution be read under the next administration, please.
So in that instance, we would all have to pull our sponsorship and let it die.
You can table it. And you can, you can, I mean, you can.
You're not going in front, Paul. There are.
Uh, can I get a recommendation from her?
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a resolution, so it will go before the incoming council, first of all. So, I mean, obviously some of you won't be here to vote.
Oh, right, so.
Uh, so you can't necessarily, I mean, you can, I guess you can table the item over to the next meeting, but you won't have all the same sponsors because not all of you will be on the council anymore.
But everybody withdraw sponsorship, they just go, they, we can bring it back up in the first meeting?
If we have the support for it.
Just, you know, what?
Yes.
You're getting too complicated. Point of order to the chair. Just go ahead and read it and vote on it and then he refuses to sign it, you got another issue on him. Uh, uh, you know, it's, I don't wanna.
Nah, if I, a point of order, a point of order, Mr. President.
Councilman Prespolinski.
Okay, cause I dealt with these resolutions from day one, trying to get them put together, trying to get the mayor to sign them and unfortunately, or maybe fortunately, however way you wanna take it, the mayor refused to sign Councilman Paul Prespolinski's resolution. So that's gratitude for, you know, four years under this administration and twenty years of total being a councilman. So that's where that stands. Very unfortunate and very unprofessional as I take it. But anyway, so I just wanted to bring that up, Councilman, to let you know exactly how this thing has been going down the, uh, down the line to, uh, get it taken care of. So I, I will have a few more comments about the resolutions, but I don't wanna take away from all the, uh, accolades that the council members, uh, deserve.
Okay, so I'm gonna proceed the way I was going to by reading off the names and then all the technical stuff we'll figure out after the meeting's done. Okay, so. Honoring Councilwoman Deitch, Councilman Mac, Councilman Prespolinski and Councilman Simmons for their commitment and service to the city of Michigan City, Indiana. Whereas at the conclusion of the calendar year twenty twenty-three, the tenure of council, council members mentioned will come to a close. And whereas council members mentioned, I like that, have always performed their duty with the utmost dedication to the best interests of the city and the citizens here in and has conducted themselves with professionalism in the process. And whereas the council, council members mentioned have never forgotten that the task of government is to serve the needs of the people and have worked hard to accomplishment, to accomplish that task. And whereas we wish to thank the council members for their service and recognize their dedication as members of the Michigan City Council. And they will be missed as members of the Michigan City Common Council. Now for, now therefore be ordained, I'm sorry, be resolved by the Common Council of Michigan City that the city hereby recognizing, commend and thanks the mentioned council members for their dedication service to the city of Michigan City, Indiana. This resolution shall be in full force and, and, and effect after passage by the Michigan City Council and approval by the mayor. And this is introduced by the council in its entirety. All right, any comments from the sponsors? We're reading, uh, Councilwoman Deitch's right now. I just read it out and ad-libbed on the way through. Councilwoman Tillman?
Um, thank you, Mr. President, uh, Mr. Pr- Madam, Mr. President. Um, I just would like to say first and foremost to Councilwoman Deitch that I am grateful and very appreciative for your guidance, for your support, for your friendship, uh, for your teachings and that they will not go in vain. And I look forward to continue to serve another four years under your new administration.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, Dr. Cora?
Yes, President, um, I want to thank, um, uh, Chief, uh, Councilman, Councilman, uh, Simmons, uh, for all his years of service.
We're, we're reading, um, we're reading Councilwoman Deitch's.
Or, or one, right after, okay.
Yeah, I read it in its entirety just so it was on the record.
No, I was going to go from the left to the right, but I'm going to, I'm going to comment on Councilwoman Deitch and, uh, you know, she has been a great, um, asset to our community, uh, even though we've been missing, uh, her here. But we look forward to working, um, with her as our next mayor and I'm very optimistic that, uh, um, positive things and good things are gonna come, uh, or, uh, during her tenure as the mayor and we, I'm looking forward to working with her.
Thank you, Dr. Cora. Uh, Councilman, uh, Paul, uh, Don Prespolinski.
Thank you, Mr. President. And Councilwoman Deitch, uh, I wanna congratulate you, uh, as the new mayor-elect from the city of Michigan City, cause I don't know if anybody else, uh, in the administration has congratulated you yet as far as being the mayor, but I certainly will. Uh, I supported you from day one in your endeavor, uh, for that and, uh, now we're gonna move forward and make Michigan City a great place to, uh, to learn. And, uh, you know, we always, I, I think we had our differences at the beginning, but then we were, uh, smart enough and professional enough to know that we had to bring things together, uh, to get done what we wanted to, uh, get done. So with that being said, congratulations and on your resolution. And as you become mayor, may the awards get bigger and better as time goes on. You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Simmons?
Yes, I'd like to thank, uh, Councilwoman Deitch for her, uh, leadership, her vision. Uh, and, uh, I look forward to our continued working relationship.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Prespolinski.
Well, Mayor, I gotta say it was a rough ride, okay? And as, uh, my brother stated, we had a rough ride when we first started out, but I think, um, I wanna thank you for appointing me to the, uh, different committees that you've put me on and also, um, I feel that, I hope that I have, uh, fulfilled your expectations on me, which some people don't have, hold too highly, and I don't really give a shit. Okay? And that, and that comment was to, uh, the, uh, mayor going out. I think that, that I believe that Angie is gonna do great things and hopefully that I'll, uh, be involved in some way or another to, uh, lift our neighborhoods up by the bootstraps, cause a lot of these neighborhoods have been ignored. I'm, I mean, uh, this is really, I think that Angie, if I may, Angie has a, a lot of work ahead of her because, uh, number one, infrastructure has been ignored in our community. And I hope that through Angie's know-how that she, she can put a, a program together that we, we can double our money through different grants and different things out there and do some good things for the city of Michigan City. Because the quality of our neighborhoods is just as important as if you have medical facilities or grocery stores or anything else. It's a fabric of our community. And I, I certainly hope that we, we was saying that, An- Angie, that I know that some people are always out there trying to tear things down, but we need to move forward in a positive direction and, uh, I, I'm here to, to. To help in whatever ways I can, because in the, in the final analogy. I'm not going anywhere, and I know you're not going anywhere, and a lot of people aren't going anywhere. Is that we gotta work together as a community to make our city great, and I believe that you can put it all together. And I, I, uh, I wish you a lot of success. And like I'm saying, whatever you're, uh, I can help in any way, I'm there. Congratulations, and I think I already told you that one at once. Alright.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Mack.
Uh, congra-, uh, I'll also say congratulations, uh, Mayor Deitch. Um, you've been a cool head through serious adversity along, I mean, we've had COVID, we had racial tensions. We had burned down the Lighthouse Mall, uh, we had a lot of stuff going on in the beginning. And you've been cool and real, um, introspective, talking to all of us individually. On all of these things, you're gonna make a great mayor cuz those are the qualities that are needed, not getting all tissy-tissy when things get ugly. When things get ugly, that's when, what you need is people that's, that can keep their head about them, and you've done it since I've met you. And I'm sure you're gonna do it, uh, going forward, uh, just keep pushing on that, uh, athletic field house. I'm not gonna stop.
I go home and punch walls.
Thank you, Councilor Bear, uh, Councilman Dabney.
Uh, in, in short, thank you for your service here on the council. Um, and you know, my, my thanks to you is more personal, and you know where that, where I'm going with that as we were coming down the stretch here in the, uh, campaign. Uh, the scriptures that you were sending me to keep me from going absolutely nuts, I totally appreciate that, and that's bigger. Than anything that we had going on with the council, so I wanna say thanks to you for doing that and, uh, showing that support. Uh, there were plenty of days when I'll admit that I, I was like ready to, to throw in the towel on some things, and, and she was there. Um, so I appreciate that, like I said, that's bigger than anything we had going on with the council, and I really appreciate it. Maybe, I mean, saved those in my phone, so thank you for that, I appreciate it, and it's gonna be much success moving forward, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And I guess I'd, I'd be, uh, I, I don't know how I could go without saying something, so. Um, you know, since the beginning, I think we saw this coming five or six years ago, and we planned for it, and you know, before we, we. Even on the council, we knew that this day was coming, you know, we made a, a lot of effort to. Get the council that we were looking to, to make some changes with, we got a historic council in, now we got a historic mayor, mayor, uh, election. And congratulations, I think, uh, you know, I don't have enough words to express, you know, the, the friendship we've had. Almost, uh, you've mentored me from the beginning, you know, when we first came in. And I was still green, learning the presidency, dealing with the pandemic. We were, uh, you know, in constant communication, trying to work through all of that, then coming through the, the following years up until this last year. Campaigning through, I think we, you know, we went through a lot, we made it through, and, uh, here we are, look at us now, so congratulations. Alright, any comments from the public? Please come to the, uh, mic.
Scott Malon, two hundred Kenwood Place, uh. Yeah, with all these accolades, Madam Mayor, we're expecting great things from you. With this amount of potential, with the council behind you, we expect good things over the next four years, and you got our support, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Melo. Uh, yeah, come to the mic, please state your name and address for the record, please.
I'll be brief. Good evening, everyone, my name is Brian Coleman, I'm a resident of Michigan City, I've been Saint Andrews Village. And I just wanna say, the citizens of Michigan City are very lucky, fortunate to have a newly elected mayor. Mayor and, and Angie, we're very fortunate, very exciting times for Michigan City. Moving ahead, and I want to thank all of your councils for all your support and all the, the work you do on behalf of the city, thanks very much.
Thank you, any other comments from the public?
This is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. Uh, first of all, I'm not too cool about this new recycling company starting their pickup at five AM. That's a violation of our noise ordinance, we're not supposed to do any of our yard work.
Mister Kalavich, we're, we're talking about the resolution right now.
I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll double back around. Did you have a comment on the resolution, uh, for Councilwoman Deitch? Alright, we'll, we'll come back.
Okay, uh, good, good evening, uh, Council, uh, Paris Salt, Two Kenneth Spark Plaza. Uh, congratulations, Councilwoman, uh, Angela Nelson Deitch, uh, for your hard work, but also want to thank the councilmen who are leaving and councilwoman. Because, uh, you guys are part of a great council, um, you set the city on stage for great things, and so. Don't leave us, uh, join our committees, join our, our committee groups, uh, there's a lot going on behind the scenes, and, uh. But when Przewlinski, we would talk about that, so I'll, I'll have your number, I'll be calling you, and also, uh, Councilman Mack, so we got some things we gotta work on, so. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mister Hoss, any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the council?
First of all, um, thank you, thank you all, I, I look forward to working with, um. Councilman Gene Simmons, Councilman Paul Przewlinski, Councilman Michael Mack. We still have a lot of work to do, um, so we, you, you can't go anywhere, um. We got things to do, and I know you seen the announcement for, uh, Mister Simmons, Mister, uh, Councilman Simmons today. Um, so, um, we need good people who have run for office to continue to serve on these boards. That are gonna be important, and, and, and I appreciate the fact that, uh, Paul said that because. Um, you know, we've already discussed where I need him, um, to be, and, um, as, as we move forward. I, I think it's gonna be important that people see that, that they see the new council and all the former council people. Uh, stepping up to lead in, in all those efforts that we need for the next, uh, four years, and, um. I appreciate Don, uh, doing this, I, I remember about twelve years ago sitting in his, uh. In his living room, asking him to run for, for city council, was it twelve years ago? Yeah, twelve years ago. Almost thirteen years ago, sitting there talking to him and Jenny, and, um. You know, you see people grow over time, and, and, um, I just appreciate being able to be a support to everybody. Um, and it's gonna be on all of us to raise up those people behind us to, to prepare them for these seats. I, I don't think we've done enough, enough of that, and I hope that, um. I have been a symbol of that, of really sharing the knowledge that I have, and I hope that we all continue to do that. As we move forward with the next few councils, uh, because like I tell the people that I work with. My, my goal and my role is to prepare you to replace me. That's, that's what I'm here for, I'm here for you to replace me, and to prepare you to do what's right and to do it with integrity. And, um, to try to take the emotion out of it, but to still be passionate about what you wanna do. And so, um, again, I, I appreciate each and every one of you, thank you.
I make, make motion for adoption. We have motion to approve our Councilman Paul Przewlinski, and seconded by Dr. Cora, Miss Nigel upon the votes rooms.
Mister Paul Przewlinski?
Aye.
Miss Tillman?
Aye.
Mister Dabney?
Aye.
Mister Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mister Mack?
Aye.
Mister Don Przewlinski?
Aye.
Mister Seven?
Aye.
And Mister, uh, Doctor Cora?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
I didn't vote. Oh, I don't get to vote, oh, okay.
Alrighty then. Miss Nigel, can you please read our next resolution by title only? Uh, we gotta.
You gotta do each one, just by title.
Right, I read the resolution in its entirety, so we don't have to do that again.
Honoring Councilman Michael Mack for his commitment and service to the city of Michigan City, Indiana. And that is in, um, introduced by Mister Paul Przewlinski, Miss Tillman. Uh, Doctor Cora, Mister Simmons, Mister Don Przewlinski, Miss Deitch. Um, Mister Fitzpatrick and Mister Dabney.
Thank you, Miss Nigel, any comments from the sponsors?
Yes, um, I would like to say, um, again, we're reaching out. But, um, Mike stepped in, Michael stepped in still during COVID and jumped in. And, um, took the presidency, you know, our second year while we were still going through COVID. And, um, you know, I don't think people understand when someone's swing shifting, I don't know if people understand that he swing shifts. Uh, we got two swing, well, we used to have two, I'm not gonna say swingers, but two swing shift. I had to do that, it was, it's the end of the year, come on, everybody laugh a little bit. Um, but you know, when you, when you're, when you take these positions and you work full-time. And it's a commitment, I don't think people understand that, um, in most cases, people are working full-time jobs. Swing shifting, you know, being here, running the work, trying to get to a committee meeting. And, and that's the commitment that, um, our council has had, uh, these are not, and, and. They're not just, um, hu- side hustles or small part-time jobs, they're, they're commitments to the community. And, um, and I, I appreciate the fact that, and I could tell he would be tired some days. Um, coming in here, and, and Paul, you the same, dragging in here, um. On those days where, you know, they worked, you know, a double, and, and still made it to city council, so. I appreciate the fact that, that, you know, you stepped up to do that, and, um. You don't get many people who have that level of commitment in the community, so I appreciate that, and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman, uh, Don Przewlinski.
Yeah, Mister, uh, Councilman Michael Mack, uh, it's been a pleasure working with you on the council. Uh, as I said before the meeting, you know, always professional, always trying to do what's right. For the community, and, uh, you know, that's all you can ask of a, uh, individual, you know, to come up here and. Take the seat and vote, and think you're voting and doing the right thing, so. Uh, you fulfilled all the obligations for a, uh, city councilman, you did a fine job, thank you, Mike.
Dr. Cora?
Yeah, I've been in, on the council for a couple of months, but I have known Michael for many, many years, uh, I appreciate his hard work, dedication. His passion, uh, for this city, he really cares about the city. And also, uh, the wonderful way you have raised your family, and you're, you are a total person, uh, I appreciate, uh, I appreciate you, Mike.
Thank you, Dr. Cora, uh, Councilwoman Tillman.
Councilman Mack. Um, families go way back, um, you and my brother basketball, and just to be sure. Honestly, I was waiting for one day for you to come in here in your basketball gear and a basketball. It, it would just complete everything, and I hope that it comes to fruition, that, that, um. Sportplex come to Michigan is developed and established here in Michigan City.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Simmons.
Yes, Councilman Mack, I'd like to thank you for your service, it's been a pleasure in working with you. Uh, and I love the way you, uh, wear your passion on your sleeve because, uh, we need that. And yes, we did a lot of, uh, you didn't get everything you always wanted. And we understood that, but in the end, uh, we all love you for that passion.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Dabney?
Michael. My dog. And I just wanna, uh, thanks Michael for the, the, the late night talks and the long talks about, uh, policy that we had going on here. Um, in Michigan City, and, uh, he and I came with a lot of the same types of ideas and, and thought processes of how we should help the city. Uh, I wish we could have got a, a few more things through, uh, the system that we thought were, uh, beneficial for the city, but. I appreciate the hard work and the research that we put in, uh, to be able to do those things, and, um, you'll be missed. You'll be missed up here on, on the council, uh, but those talks are, are still gonna be happening unless you plan on going somewhere. No, so like, once again, man, I appreciate, uh, all the time that we spent together, that, you know. A real chance to get to know you outside of basketball, and know who you were growing up as a basketball player, so, um, it's been real good, man, real good, uh. Uh, getting to really know you, uh, like I said, outside of basketball, you know, with some of the processes and thought processes that we have here. And I appreciated it, man, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Deb, uh, Councilman Przewlinski. Oh, sorry, Councilman Przewlinski.
Uh, Mister Mack, I guess, uh, Councilman Mack. I guess people finally understand work and shift work, okay? But I don't know if they really understand it, so I appreciate those comments that were made, but Michael. I gonna, I wanna tell you is that your thoughts on doing something for the city are not lost. Cuz I have been thinking about something, um, and that is. Something that we need to do for everybody in the city, and hopefully that we can get something done. For our community with the available technology that's out there. Okay, so with, with that, uh, you, you know, Mi- Michael, that. Yes, we can, we can do something great, but we gotta just sit down and plan it out. And that's where I wanna, you know, I, I'm not going anywhere. I lived in the second ward my whole life, and I'm not going anywhere, and I think that that's what. We, as Angie said, we need to sit and contribute and go through the thought process. And, uh, put, bring something to the table. Uh, and, I mean, you know, there's many times we haven't agreed, but I think on, uh. Something, a lot of big things that we have agreed upon, you know, and, uh. And as being a fellow steelworker, um, I have to, have to give you some leeway, okay? Because sometimes, you know, it's just, and when you're on that. Twelve-hour, twelve-hour shift, and maybe you took a nap, and you're trying to, and then you gotta come back, and, you know. But hey, we, we have to all have a positive input and help mayor-elect. For our community, and I'm committed to that, and I believe you are too, so hey, don't. Don't go running away, alright, thank you.
That was it, Councilman Mack. Alright, I didn't expect that, but, uh, I thank all of you. One more? Yeah, I had something to say. Yeah, after, after pub, after public comment, so yeah, um, I, I just wanna say, uh, you know, thank you for all of the, you know, the talks we had in the beginning, we were. You know, back and forth almost daily, getting this stuff going, we were trying to make decisions when, you know, we were facing shutdown, dealing with a pandemic, and you know. A lot of times, I, I'd have one idea and I'd be stuck on it, and you'd give me that voice of reason, and then I had to look at it differently and, and, and sometimes change my mind, so. I always appreciated that, even when we didn't agree on other things, you know, the, the fact that, you know, you would hold steady and, and still be that voice of reason. Is something that we always needed up here, and, uh, we definitely will, will miss that, and it was always appreciated, and never hard feelings. So, uh, any comments from the public?
Kathy Stransky, two two three Spark R F, I wanna thank all of you, because I sit here and I know how hard it is. And it's a lot of work, it's a lot of hours, it's running back and forth, it's writing stuff, it's scratching it out, rewriting it. I appreciate it, every bit of it, okay, but Paul, I've been sixty-four years in the second ward. I know you have beat me by a few, okay, by a few, okay? But I'm gonna miss you, I'm gonna miss watching you walk by, thank you.
Still be around.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
This is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, and I wanna sing some praises to Councilman Michael Mack, hey. you've left yourself quite a legacy on the counseling with the city. You know, all collectively, you know, four years ago, you all became the first black majority uh city council in the history of our city. Two-thirds majority, six of you. Council Michael and Michael Mack, I think your biggest legacy is it was your ordinance that opted Michigan City and and into collecting the lit tax that gave a big raise in pay to recruit our, our fire and police. You also just recently, uh, it was your ordinance that you all unanimously uh became sponsors of for the reconstruction of Paz Rover, Michigan City High School's app. I think one of your biggest legacies out every, a lot of people don't know this, but prior to coming on the council back in two thousand fifteen, you played an instrumental role in establishing the unified track team at Michigan City High School. That gave the students with disabilities uh the opportunity to compete in high school sports in, in Michigan City High School. I'll never forget that. I wish back in December I could, they would have redistricted me back to your third ward because I would have filed become your successor. I've told you before, no offense to the rest of the ward councilmen at large, but being the third ward councilman, I feel that's the most challenging because the third ward in Michigan City is the most underserved. And you've just been an excellent councilman. Uh, I, I just enough for your, can't give you enough gratitude for your service. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Any other comments from the pu- uh public? Comments from the council?
All right, man, that was uh, that was very nice. That was a very nice. It's a great way to go out. Um, Tommy, I didn't think anybody knew uh the uh part about unified track. That was outstanding, but uh I, I really appreciate everything I've learned from all of you guys. Um, you know, I've been a big box retail manager before. I've been a regional manager with outlets, malls, school teacher, um, currently a steel worker, twelve hours from five P M. to five A M. And then from five A M. to five A, five P M. Four on and four off. And I think I've missed maybe three meetings and all of them were probably this year, uh even during COVID. And, and like most of us, we work through that. Now, the old athlete in me is so proud of how we handle the adversity because that's really what it's all about. When you're going up against uh something ugly, you don't have to always agree. You don't have to always, you know, but it's integrity when you can tell people how you feel about something. And allow them to tell you how they feel about it. And then the chips fall where they fall. Uh, and that's what I love about this council. We went, we, we handled hard stuff. Um, and all of the conversation, how you get to the end, it's nice and fine, but we got to the end on a lot of stuff. The fire department got big stuff. The police department got big stuff. Um, we got through COVID and we did it with integrity and we did it with a lot of conversation with each other. So um I am just so proud and um happy with the last four years. But uh working twelve hours and doing this is, is uh not as easy. And a lot of people think, you know, like someone said earlier, we, people are in politics for the money and everything, you know, I'm, I'm from Michigan City, born and raised, went to high school, graduated at Elston. Both of my kids uh went to school here. So I'm not going anywhere, whatever you would need me to do. Mayor Deitch, you know, I'm down for it. Um, and uh I am just looking forward to uh watching the fruits of so many seeds we planted as a council during these years grow. And, you know, I'm gonna be around. I'm not going anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mack. Ms. Nadel, can you please read our, oh, wait.
Motion.
We need a motion. I'm going to approve second. A motion to uh approve by uh Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilman Paul Preslinsky. Ms. Nadel, want to vote, please?
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preslinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Cora?
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Preslinsky.
Aye.
We have eaten favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nadel. We halfway there. Read our next ordinance, I mean, our next resolution by title only.
A resolution by title only honoring Councilman Paul Preslinsky for his uh commitment and service to the city of Michigan City, Indiana. And it is introduced by Mr. Dabney, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Mack, Ms. Deitch, Mr. Don Preslinsky, Mr. Simmons, Dr. Cora, and Ms. Tillman.
Any comments from the sponsors?
I can roast you. Yes, uh, Council. So Paul, we're gonna miss you. You know, um, Paul has been my work husband. Cause we fight all the time behind stories, then come here and we.
We have heated discussions.
Yes, okay. Heated discussions, if you wanna call it, but you know what? It's all been in, in love and fun. Um, for the last several years and, and, and I've known Paul for, for years when I was on the council before and um just running into him, his son doing his, his boy scout projects and um, you know, and uh, but again, you know, we, we agree to disagree, we, we fight and then we come to the council meetings. There's been one time or two that he didn't talk to me, but other than that, we usually just make up and, and it's all good. And um Paul is gonna be a, a part of, of some of the things I'm trying to get done um on infrastructure. So more to come, but it's, it's one of those things that um he's passionate about what he believes in and he holds true to it, whether I, I think he's crazy or wrong. It, it, it's what it is and it's always all good when it's all said and done. And I, and I can appreciate that. Um, I'm, I'm always down for a good um back and forth and, and we don't always agree, but uh in the end, it's like, okay, we took our stance and then we just move from it. And, and I can uh appreciate that. So um with that being said, um, I'm, I'm not gonna miss you up here because I ain't gonna be up here either, but but, but I will say that uh I look forward to working with you on some projects in the future. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Tillman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, Councilman Paul Preslinsky. It has been an honor to serve with you on the city finance committee for three years. Um, good cop, bad cop. And he has taught me a lot um to continue to stay firm in what I believe in. And that anything that was derogatory indirectly said um in regards to me or to him, he had my back and vice versa. Um, and that will always continue. I would like to think that we have developed a business friendship that will sustain um throughout the years and even conversations about our grandkids. Uh, you know, we share the pictures of our grandkids and their enjoyment and everything. And you are a book of knowledge. I have not met anyone, probably other than my dad and my mom, that knows so much history about Michigan City. And I even go home sometime and I talk with my mother and tell her the, the stories or some of the things that you've shared with me. And she can convey that, yep, that's right. That's right. Um, and for that, I would love to see if I could have a subcommittee if I'm reappointed to as chair for the finance committee, for a subcommittee to keep you on the finance.
I appreciate that. Thank you. That's a great idea.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Simmons.
Yes, uh, Paul, I would like to thank you for your years of service uh on the past council uh in the present. I know you've served uh on multiple levels as far as the council goes as a councilman. Uh, a little background. On one of my darkest days as chief of police, uh, I had a million dollar for damage done to my station via uh, a prisoner. And Paul was the first councilman to come over uh to my aid the, the previous morning. And I will always thank him for that. Uh, thank you for your con- continual commitment uh and your, your passion, your, your research uh and your relationship. I will always value your relationship. And uh Tracy is, is right. You have a wealth of knowledge uh when it comes to Michigan City, uh, ordinances. Uh, you have it all stuck in the back of your head. When you, you need it, you bring it out. Uh, uh, we're going to continue to hopefully uh work with you in the future and one way or another.
Thank you, Councilman Simmons. Councilman Mack.
Councilman Preslinsky. Um, I, I'd really admire a, a lot of things you do. And the main thing I wanted to mention kind of is the story that you might not, you know, remember so much uh at Steel Mill. But first you hold your ground. In, in this capacity, you hold your ground on whatever the topic is. You research uh and, and come to conclusions. Um, you love your country. I've heard that uh many a times through many topics that you truly love your country and your state and your city and, and democracy. Um, you're not afraid to be alone on any topic. Um, not at all. A lot of people go to her, not us, but just in general. Um, and you're not afraid to stand up and be the only one voicing an opinion. And that's admirable, uh, no matter how you feel about your side of an opinion for me. Um, and what you told me one time, and this is what I was gonna say, uh, when, when uh during COVID, we both work at the steel mills. I don't have uh thirty years like some of those guys. I've got thirteen in. And so when COVID came, they laid off a lot of people. I didn't have enough years to uh stay, but I had too many years to actually get laid off. So they booted me down to janitorial. But I got my pay as a janitor. So I was like, I'm cool with that. And I got put over in his department, like way across where they truly, you know, the department I work in is, the steel is done. We deal with what you see on the trucks rolled up. His, they deal with the hot metal. I had never been over there before. Oh, scary. And uh he told me one time, I went to his pool pit, uh, I'm famous for walking under that big vet of steel, not knowing where that, where I was going. Um, and he told me, uh, as a union president out there, he uses his weaks, what people perceive as a weakness as a strength. They, they think that they're getting to him, but he does some of these things on purpose to um draw it out of. You know, and, and that was a trick that he learned being in the union. We've got a tough union. Uh, as a steel workers, our uni- our union is tough. There's some tough people out there uh that, and we stand up for uh the rights of the worker. So uh, you know, whether people know it or not, whether you knew it or not, I, I admire all those qualities. It's toughness and grip. And uh we, as adults, if we can pass that on, that's where we start winning. And that's, you know, we, those qualities. So thank you. I appreciate you and uh never forget this.
Thank you, Councilman. Dr. Cora.
You know, I, I've known uh Councilman Preslinsky for many years and uh uh what I admire about you, Paul, is your passion and you have a unique style and nobody can dispute that, you know? And uh, and, 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 and when you believe in something, and when I was in the county commission, you used to come and articulate your views and uh in a, in your own uh inimitable style, but always caring about the community. I think what you represent is caring about the community of Michigan City, La Porte County and, and the country, you know, as Michael said. Um, thank you for uh almost two decades uh on this council uh you have served and uh but uh like uh Angie said, you're not going anywhere. I think we'll keep you busy.
Thank you, Dr. Cora. Councilman Dabney?
Yep, real quick, uh, in regards to uh Councilman uh Paul Preslinsky. Um, you know, I, I don't know how many people in the city have actually served a term, took time off and then been reelected to come back. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know how, how many have had the chance to do that. But you've done that. So obviously the public has put you back in the office. Um, so obviously they respect you and, and to bring you back onto the council. And uh we've had big disagreements uh here on the council and, and with the back and forth going on. But I do always respect the fact that when you stand on a topic, you stand on that topic. You believe what you say and that's how you feel. And I've tried my best to try to convince you to go one way. You've done the same in, in reverse, but you stood on those things that you believe in and that's, you gotta respect somebody that does that. Um, even if you don't agree, but you have to respect the guy who stands on what he believes in. And that is a big part of what we all do here on the council. So uh whether you've had some, some back and forth and things like that, you have to respect the guy who stands on what he believes. Uh, because if you vote your fold and bend to other people's will at all time, this job is admitted for you. And uh I appreciate that with the time that you were on here. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Preslinsky.
Might last ago?
I'll probably be last, but you wanna be last?
Yeah.
You can be last.
Go ahead.
But I just wanna say, you know, Uncle Paul, man. You know, we all got that, that person that no matter what, they pull your coattails and, and try to bring you around to something or put you up on something that you may not be aware of. That was always Paul for me. I mean, you know, it's been many times up here, Paul was the lone stranger and, and it's been many times it was just him and I, two against eight. And we would still go, you know, because we believed in what we believed in, you know, watching him fight for the fire department and, you know, fight in opposing views against some of the issues with the double track and just, I mean, I could go on and on and on about the things that's going on in the city where he had his own view about it and he meant what he said and he made to get it around. Sometimes it's a little a little, a little hard to get it out of him. He'd go around in circles a couple of times, but he always got it out and made our meetings a little longer than necessary, but you know, somebody's gotta do that. So, but I know we, we're gonna miss you up here and I know I'll be talking to you and you'll, you'll be around and we'll, we'll still get some more of those. I'm sure you'll be calling and say, hey, look at this. Don't, don't just let them gloss this over. So I, I, I appreciate all that. Thanks, Paul. Councilman Preslinsky?
Hi, brother. Councilman Paul Preslinsky, but more importantly, my brother, Paul Preslinsky. And I just wanna give a little history as far as Paul and mine and my dad, our history on the uh city council here. I believe my dad was on the city council for twenty-six years. Uh, Paul, I don't know the exact, I don't know, maybe twenty years. And myself, I'm finishing up twelve. But what my point is, I believe if you go back to political history in the city of Michigan City, there is no, there is no other family that had three family members from that immediate family sit on the city council. And I don't believe that there's been two brothers sitting on the city council at the same time. Okay, and I just wanted to bring that up because I know Paul and I have always uh talked about that and yeah, very, very proud of that. And I can just say, Paul, that I know that our dad would be very, very proud looking down from heaven on the accomplishments that you've had as the second ward city councilman. Uh, what you've tried to get done in that ward. Uh, couldn't get everything done, but they get some things done and, and we under, we understand that. But uh just your, your passion, unbelievable passion. I'm gonna say that because I used to get phone calls every day and, and listen to the passion. And uh try to explain my passion back and uh, but uh anyway, uh, you know, Paul, I, I, you know, you did your homework. You knew what you were talking about. Uh, and you stood your ground, even with myself, you stood your ground. And a lot of times I couldn't debate, but it made me think. And that's the way this, the council operates is you listen to what other people have to say. You gotta be open-minded to what other people say and at least think about what they're telling you. So uh all I'm gonna say, Paul, is that you're gonna be dearly missed and I'm gonna miss you uh. So all I'm gonna say, Paul, is that you're gonna be dearly missed. And I'm gonna miss you for giving me the advice and information and the history on certain things that, you know, came up. Especially the sewer project and the second ward. Which one of my objectives here in the next four years is to see that get done before I leave off of this council. That's gonna be done. Cause I'm tired of hearing about it. And we gotta get the money put together to get it done. Anyway, Paul, congratulations. You know, wish you the best of luck. And, you know, that's all I can say. You've been, you've been one hell of a councilman. And honestly and truthfully, the people of the second ward are gonna miss you very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any comments from the public?
Yeah, what they said. I could say a lot.
Hi, Daisy Lee, two and eight Derby Street. Thank you to all of you who are leaving. Thank you for your service. And Paul, thank you for everything that you've done for the city and your passion and your joy. And you've done some really great things for the city. So thank you for all that. And I look forward to continuing the footsteps that you have laid down. Thank you.
This is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I just wanna sing the praises of my councilman, my second ward councilman, senior council member, Paul Prespolinski. It's like everybody said, you're not going anywhere. You're not gonna continue serving our city in some kind of capacity. I don't think any of you that are leaving the council are the type of people that's just gonna sit back and watch the grass grow. I, I feel that anytime I could ask you for any advice, I could come right to you right away or give you a call or come by your house and knock on your door. I'm just gonna continue to, and everybody put me on the Fire Merrick Commission. I appreciate you and love you. You just keep up the good work. And we got great times ahead in Michigan City. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kalavich.
Barrett Taylor, Michigan City Fire Department. President of the Union. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, and soon to be chief of the fire department. Thank you to Mrs. Deitch and everyone else. I thought I missed my shot earlier, cause everybody come up was talking about the council. But definitely on, on Paul's here, I had to come down and speak. Because what everybody said, you know, they, they have their personal dealings with Paul. And I, I've had some dealings with Paul and some discussions and some words. But we've always shook hands. And, 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 and I like to think that he's a friend of mine. And, and I want to say for me, and I'm sure for the majority of the fire department, I want to thank the entire council, especially Paul, for what you have done for us over these past four years with getting us new equipment, trucks, raises. We very much appreciate that. And, and, and when we have had our discussions and talks with everybody, we, we've been open and respectful. And, and I hope we can continue that. Whether you're still, you know, whoever's still gonna be on the council and with the future council. And those of you that are leaving in the capacities that I'm sure we will be crossing paths with again, whether you'd be on another commission, another board or whatever. I just want to say thank you to the entire council. And, and it was a pleasure working with you guys and having the discussions that we've had. And like I said, I, I hope in whatever capacity in the future, we can continue that. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council, uh, public? Comments from the council? Councilman Prespolinski.
I, I just, you know, their accolades are overwhelming. And I guess the best way to describe it, I can't take all the credit. I'm gonna give that credit to my father. And he told me, he said, Paul, here's how I'd describe it. My father and myself, we sat on the city council for about six months together, cause somebody resigned. And the first meeting that I went to, he said, Paul, get over here with the shirt you're gonna wear, so I can iron it for you. And then we'll go over the agenda. And this is all true, this is the true story. And so I hurried up and got together and got over there. And he goes, now, we're riding up to city hall. And he goes, Paul, I wanna tell you something. Don't worry. Let me see if I can, you know, I'm trying to paraphrase this. Don't worry if I get called on first to vote on something and you don't agree with it. Vote what you think is right. And do what you think is right. So you don't have to look over your shoulder. And remember, your word and your handshake is your bond. And that's one thing that I've never forgotten my entire life. Whether I was on the city council or a union rep for a long time, or what, whatever I was doing. And I really appreciate that, the accolades. And, you know, it's overwhelming. And, and Don, let me tell you, he's heard more than just discussions, okay? And, and, and it's like, you know, we're having a discussion today. But that, see, that's family. That's brothers, okay? And Don's, he, I will say one thing. He, he does put up with a lot of, I don't ever do that big brother thing, okay? I think I did that once, right? And he does listen. And, and he, he gives me his opinion when he can get it in. And we, we work things out. Just like Angie said, we, we've worked through many, many items. And I, and I just, I wanna thank what you guys said. It's very humbling. And I'm now, I'm gonna work with the administration, work with the council, and move this city forward, move our neighborhoods forward. And I gotta say this is that Dr. Cora is my physician. And he's, and he has doctored me. Well, I wanna thank him publicly. A lot of people don't know this. He's doctored me through three, three rounds of COVID. And never once, never once said, you need to get vaccinated. That's kinda, that's kinda doctor he is. Cause he knew I was a stubborn dude and I wasn't giving up. But I, hey, see, people don't know how to take those accolades. And, and Tracy, I appreciate your comments because I try to, I really try to share my knowledge. And Chief, it's just like for me, that's the chief. And Barrett, I appreciate your comments. And, you know, with your comments is we've had a very difficult four years. People don't really realize that. We were left with a real, a real mess. That's what we were left with. And we worked through it as a group to get to where we are today. Good fire equipment, enough people, a fully manned police department. And that, I think, is a great accomplishment, a great accomplishment, what we have achieved. And I got, and for the negotiating team, let me tell you that a lot of them were pulling their hair out with me, okay? But I had a, I had a vision. And the vision was to do something so we would have a fully complement of people and well paid. And, you know, this, this, how can I say this? This is the cooperative effort of where we are today. And I have to give credit to the rest of the council and to the leadership of the council that enabled us and put us on these very important committees to get this, to get to where we are today. And I, I wanna, I hope Cindy doesn't watch this program either, okay? But An, An, Angie, you know, I, I'm, I'm not gonna do what I did when I, when I had, took the hiatus before. And all I was focusing on was the boy scouting. Is I'm gonna do what I'm gonna, gonna do, but I'm gonna be involved with the city. And I, I really appreciate all the comments. And Jean, you are the chief. And, yeah, I gotta, I gotta say this is that, you know, when, when we were, you were the chief and I was on the city council, my goodness, we didn't have this kind of problem with the leadership of the administration. And Chief knows what I'm talking about. But I wanna apologize to the council and to the public and to the audience for my vulgarity earlier. But I just wanna, if you remember one thing about tonight, remember the one act of pettiness with the mayor saying he's not gonna sign the resolution for me. Remember that. That's what we dealt with for four years. So, you know, I, I don't wanna close like that, but I wanna thank Don for, for listening to me. And I got some additional comments tonight. All right, but we'll get through it. Angie, Michael Mack, Bryant, Dr. Cora, Donald C. Prespolinski, Consulate Lodge, thank you. Fritz, thank you. And Angie, I'm, I'm looking forward to working with you. And Tracy, those comments, I, I really think that's a good idea to have in a subcommittee, you know? With that all being said, I'm not going anywhere. Thank you.
Move for adoption.
We have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Deitch and seconded by Councilwoman Tillman. Title on the vote, please.
Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mr. Mack.
Hi.
Ms. Deitch.
Let me think about it. No.
Aye. Mr. Don.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nauk. Could you please read our last but not least resolution by title only?
Honoring Councilman Jean Simmons' first commitment and service to the city of Michigan City, Indiana. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney, Mr. Fitzpatrick, Mr. Mack, Ms. Deitch, Mr. Don Prespolinski, Dr. Cora, Mr. Paul Prespolinski, and Ms. Tillman.
Thank you, Ms. Nauk. Any comments from the sponsors? Councilman Prespolinski.
You know, Jean and I go back a ways. And how many times did you come to my house with the information? Remember they had you delivering stuff at the last minute? How many, how many times? Quite a few, right? Come on in, Jean. All right? And I, I gotta say that whenever I had a problem and I would call, you know, call Jean, got taken care of, responded back. Jean's always been, he's been a really great person, really has. And his wife, Linda. You know, I gotta give accolades to the, you know, the, the better half, all right? And but one thing about the chief, he's always so smooth, you know? Always so smooth. And I, and I can appreciate that. But, you know, Chief, I think that you, with that subtlety, brought a lot of patience to the table. Cause when, whenever you speak, I guess it's almost like E.F. Hutton. Okay? And I, look, you and I, we know we're not going anywhere. We're gonna help whatever we need to be helpful at. So I'm looking forward to seeing you. Besides, you know, at our regular meetings, maybe Angie will have a coffees with the mayor. You know, something like that. Okay? Thanks, Jean, for being Mr. Smooth.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Prespolinski.
Okay. Second Councilman Prespolinski. One thing I learned from you, Jean. I think this saying came up, I don't know, a couple of years ago. And something was going on where maybe the council wasn't getting along with somebody or in the administration or whatever it was. And I think you came, you came up with the saying, or you didn't come up with the saying, but you said the same. Praise in public and criticize in, in private?
Yep.
Yeah. And when I heard that, that has stuck with me forever. So in the land, whenever you said that. So that's a good learning point that I got. And I just want to thank you, Jean, for all your professionalism. And like Paul, like Paul said, you know, Mr. Cool, just, you know, keep everything in front of you. Don't get too shook up about things. And yeah, you did a great job as far as being on the city council for six years. So that is what I'm going to take with me. I'm gonna praise in public and criticize in private. So I learned, yeah, that was a great saying. All right. Thank you, Jean. God bless you. And we'll see you around. And I know you're gonna be around, cause you're good, you're on the Board of Works now. So I'm gonna have to come to the Board of Works meetings and, and plead my case in front of you now. Okay? So give, so give me a break and give me a yes every once in a while. That, yeah, we'll take care of that, Don. All right? Thank you.
I don't know who's next. I don't go down on my end. Uh, Dr. Cora.
And I want to thank Jean for his years of service, not only in the council, but outside the council as a police chief. And you've been a voice of reason, a voice of wisdom for many of us in the community. And so thanks for your years of service. And thanks for letting Linda be part of our team and helping us out in other capacities. And look forward to working you, with you on Board of Works and, and various other roles that you may be playing in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. I mean, Dr. Cora. Councilman Dabney.
Jean Simmons. This, yeah, just the silent calm down there. And when things would always get out of control and everybody's, you know, yelling, screaming. And I mean, Jean's just quiet. You know, he, he just, he thinks about these things and he balls them over. And then, you know, he makes his votes. And I don't ever remember hearing him raise his voice in a, in a council meeting. If anybody else can remember something like that, please tell me. Cause I sure can't. And that is something that, you know, as a younger African American, to see you as an example, that is something to learn, which I'm still learning. You know, to have that, that quiet confidence and, and to be able to, you always present yourself to the public as a gentleman. And, and you've, you've, you've been a great role model for us, seeing you here in Michigan City. And I, I mean, I understand that as well, the way you present yourself and some of the things. Because I know when I would swallow the microphone and all that kind of stuff, your wife would jump on me. So I know, I know if you, if she, if you ever had anything going on, like somebody issued you that she would bring up to me, that she would have been all over you as well. I'm hoping that. But, you know, but you didn't have those issues learning as a young council person. So I really appreciate the, the example that you set for all of us, you know, coming through as city council people, other people on boards and commissions that would watch our meetings and see how you carry yourself. It's always at a very high professional level. And I've always appreciated that about you. So thank you for that. And that was a learning experience that I've had from you, Jean. And I appreciate you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Mack.
Mr. Simmons, the, you know, the Simmons.
you know, the Simmons family has been part of my life since kindergarten. Uh, your younger brother Steve and I, we've been good friends since, since kindergarten. We grew up in kindergarten together. I've ate meals at, at your house. You were grown, that, that gone by that time, uh, it's quite a few of you Simmonses. And, uh, ate a few meals at Tracy's house too, back in the day. Matter of fact, uh, friends with her brother. Um, but Mr. Simmons, your resume speaks for itself. Uh, you can't judge a book by its cover as far as talking and things like that, but it's leadership. Uh, you were military. Uh, same as I said with, uh, Don, I mean, you truly love your country. You, you don't wear it on your sleeve so much, but if the topic comes up, you can hear it. You've been there, you've done, you've done hard stuff. Uh, the chief of police in Michigan City during that time had to be hard. I mean, you know, that, and I'm understating it, and so I'm not gonna get into all of that stuff. Uh, you're a perfect example of discipline and leadership. And like I said earlier, qualities count so much more than talking and gibberish. Uh, and, and your resume just tells anybody all they need to know about the quality of life you've led and, uh, the people that you impacted with those things. So, uh, those old school values are the ones that do need to be handed down and carried on. Um, appreciate you and love all y'all Simmonses. There are twenty or thirty of them.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Tillman.
Uh, Councilman Simmons, um, my sentiments as all of the other council members that sit here. And I've had the opportunity to sit, what, two, two years? Next, next to you. And during my time sitting here, as everyone said, he's humble, he's neat, he's quiet. But when you speak, it's actually, as we would say, or the youth would say, the mic dropped. The meeting, actually, council meeting can be over after he makes his comment or his statement. And it has been a pleasure working, uh, with you and serving with you on the city council. And again, you're not going anywhere, so I know that we will still be interacting, uh, on behalf of the city. So, I look forward to that as well and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Council, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Dyche.
Well, I know a different Gene, cause he talks too much. No, I'm just playing. So Gene, I call him Uncle Gene. So, um, uh, you know, it's been a pleasure, um, talking and, and he's kinda like, um, my confidant when I first started on the council, uh, was Hazel Thomas. And Gene has become my, my Hazel Thomas, uh, you know, that I can just, I can vent and say what I wanna say. Uh, and then I'll look at the timer like, it, it, it's midnight. What happened? We've been on the phone for two hours. Um, so I, I know Gene a little differently now, um, over the last, you know, two years. Um, and it's been a pleasure. He put on a lot of miles on his feet for me. Uh, and he's gone to bat for me, um, big time, big time. And, uh, and I can just say what I wanna, wanna say. And I know it's, he's listening and most time agreeing. Um, I, my choice of words have been very colorful at times and he just listens. He listens and, um, and lets me, uh, bounce off what I need to get off my chest and say. And, uh, and that's been wonderful. It's been, it's been a wonderful time. So, um, yeah, Gene talks. He talks. People may not know, but again, that, that quietness and that, um, when he, he talks and he speaks, he speaks for a reason. You know, a lot of us like to hear ourselves talk. I'm one of them people. I know I am. And, um, but Gene, when, when Councilman Simmons, Mr. Simmons, Chief Simmons speaks, it's for a reason. It's just not to, to reiterate, to, to just say something. He's saying it for a reason. And you can always appreciate that, uh, in people. And, uh, and like I said, as you know, he, he's, he's, he's a part of, he's part of my team and will always be a part of my team. Um, because I trust him with just about everything. And, um, I think the public has grown to trust, um, Gene as well. So, I'm not gonna miss him, cause I'm gonna see him all the time. Um, and, and talk to him quite a bit. So, um, um, it's just a, a, extension of where we started. Uh, but I've just grown to love this, this part, him and Linda, um, for everything they do in the community. Uh, but also just for having my back. So, um, again, it's all good and, and we got a lot of, of things to do. So I appreciate you.
Uh, Councilman Simmons. I, I didn't get to eat at your house when I was little, cause I wasn't here. But, you know, I, I can't say that, uh, I can't say that when I, the way we met, it was when, uh, we were looking to caucus you onto the council and that was one of the first times I met you. And one of my first, uh, opportunities to cast a vote to caucus someone in, and I think that was one of the best votes I ever cast to, to get you here. And to say that you were quiet is probably the understatement. But when you came, I mean, there's probably been a handful of times up here where I didn't already know where I was gonna vote or I could have been swung. And the, the couple of times I could think of is something that you said that shifted my thought process. And I'm like, you know what? Maybe we should go this direction with this. And, and there's been a couple of times where Councilwoman Dyche and I have been like, we got how many votes? Which way you think Gene gonna go? And sometimes it, it would be swinging, waiting on you to swing it one way or another. And whichever way it went, we knew that it was the right way because we knew you put your thought into it and you always voted your conscience in. And we needed that sometimes, cause, you know, we'll get firing us and just wanna go gung ho against the world. And, and that's not always the approach. So definitely thank you for that. And, uh, look forward to seeing you around and see how your Board of Works go. So, thank you. Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Motion to support.
Councilman Simmons? Oh, we have one from the public. Tommy. It's Tommy.
This is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. So I want to express my gratitude to Councilman Gene Simmons for always his stoic and distinguished presence and always sit down there at the end for the last six years. And looking forward to both you and, uh, Councilman Beatrice and Councilwoman Silva's, uh, servitude on the Board of Works beginning next year. Uh, I just wanna thank you all, you councilmen, for the historical and landmark and groundbreaking decision you made three years ago for opening up the Michigan City Promise Scholarship to all the students that, that rest. That's gonna go down in my book as your biggest legacy as a council. You know, that opened up for my students to, to receive that, that scholarship. Uh, but then we're gonna not only have, uh, I wanna start a new thing with the mayor. I'm, we're not gonna have coffee with the mayor. We're gonna start, it's gonna be called rolling with the mayor and the mayor mobile. That, that said, we're all gonna get together, take a ride and spot check and tuck the look of these things. We wanna clean up the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kalavich. Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Motion to support.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone for all their kind words. Uh, it's been a joy, uh, honor. And I, I just can't say enough how much I've enjoyed working with everyone. I think, uh, this has been one of the best teams. Uh, we've all worked so great in a collaborative effort that, uh, I think we received less pushback from the public because we worked so well together. Uh, and I think, uh, there's a lot of respect out there in the public because of this team. Uh, like I said, um, um, I'll miss, I'll miss setting up here with this team. I, I've always looked forward to getting here and whether we agreed or disagree, uh, I really and truly genuinely love working with everyone. And for that, I will miss you. Uh, however, uh, you can all see me again at the Board of Works. Thank you.
Councilwoman.
Motion to support resume.
So, we have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Tillman and a second by Dr. Cora. Ms. Nyle on the vote, please.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mr. Mack.
Hi.
Ms. Dyche.
Hi.
Mr. Don Presbalinsky.
Aye.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Paul Presbalinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyle. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
I'm not, you.
We have three minutes.
We'll see about that. Um, brain fart.
Brain what?
Brain fart.
Okay.
Oh, back to business. Sorry after that, uh, long interlute of congratulations. Uh, I would say I have two things to bring up tonight. One is if a citizen takes the time and effort to write the council, I would appreciate if that letter was read to know it was seen. The letter I wrote was about the bonus situation of the police. And I recommended a clawback provision as opposed to granting it willy nilly because we've already lost two to people who are no longer with the force. And I think, uh, that's something to be considered since they haven't been granted yet. And the people haven't been hired yet, there's still a chance to change the language for those bonuses. Uh, what brings me here tonight actually is, uh, something that came up in the, uh, uh, Board of Zoning Review, uh, zoning appeals a week ago Tuesday. Uh, it's not about the people who did it. This has already been adjudicated. They've been granted an exception and this, the structure's been built. So this is not about the people. This is about the department that approved this structure that violates at least two, uh, ordinances or setback requirements. And this is about a very large garage built at the corner of, uh, Gardena and Tilden. Approximately five thirty-five Tilden. Again, it's not about the people. They're great neighbors, great decorations. I don't think this garage should have ever been approved. One is as large as a house in that neighborhood. It's absolutely large. Um, but it violates the setbacks. And the people were put through a lot of stress. They were granted a building permit for this garage incorrectly. And then they were red tagged two days from completion. They had to hire a real estate attorney, Dave Ambers from LaPorte. They spent over sixteen hundred dollars on his fee and the untold stress that family went through not knowing if they'd be required to tear down this building, which would, which would have, uh, led them to sell their house. I spoke to them the day after that meeting to apologize for speaking against the structure. Um, it shouldn't have been granted. They said they couldn't figure out what the setback requirements are. That's fine. They're laypeople, but the people in the building department that approved the building permit should have been able to figure out the setback for, for their zoning is for a corner lot side street yard is a front yard setback of the zoning district. So it's the same as the front setback. Okay, what is that? Review a zoning map. It turns out there are one deep. Front setback is twenty feet. Side street yard, twenty feet. It's a twenty foot setback. It's pretty easy to figure out. I figured it out in less than ten minutes and I'm a layperson. In addition to that, it violates the corner intersection rule, which is when you have, uh, something intersecting with a street or an alley, you're supposed to be fifteen feet back. These people were granted. And there's even diagrams in the zoning code, by the way. Again, I don't expect the people to know that, but the people who issued the building permit sure as hell should, excuse me. So, this is an, this is another example, in my opinion, of the incompetence of the building department that you've heard me speak about. And this is an example of why I feel so strongly about that department. Um, what are the consequences of such incompetence? Again, this family went through a lot of stress and added expense. And by the way, this is a forty thousand dollar structure. And they've done great, they've done great, uh, the last five years or so they've owned their property. Again, it's nothing against the people. Um, but now the people of Michigan City are frankly gonna be stuck with this, what I consider an eyesore that sticks past the building line of the entire street for the next sixty years or more. And arguably, it creates a safety, uh, concern at the alley as children are walking down the sidewalk. Um, again, it's about the building department or whoever approved that. It should have never been approved. Um, and I know some of you won't be here next year. Some of you are carrying over and of course, our mayor-elect is aware of that as well. And I just wanted to make it known that, uh, people noticed. But again, the blame is on that building department, in my opinion, or whoever approved that. Layperson might not be able to figure out the code, but people whose job it is to know the code sure as heck should.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. And that's why I don't want that building department to begin any more authority for any more rules. They can't handle what's on their plate. No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public?
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. Like I briefly mentioned before, I'm not too cool with this new recycling company starting their pickups at five AM. That's a noise ordinance violation. We're not supposed to start any of our, uh, uh, ground maintenance or construction work or make any kind of noise disturbance anytime between the hours of seven AM and eight PM. That's way too early. That's okay for out in the county, but here in the city, you gotta start at seven AM. You know, it is by statute that it's the number one duty of the mayor of every city in Indiana to enforce all the ordinance of the city and the statutes of the state. I wanna mention that, uh, tomorrow morning, beginning at nine AM, they're gonna have a holiday ham giveaway at the Advancing Christ King Ministries on the Boulevard. I also wanna mention, uh, after we have our swearing in ceremony on Saturday, the thirtieth, at three PM, our very own, uh, uh, six foot five, three hundred pound defensive tackle from Florida State University, Brayden Fest, he's gonna be playing in the Orange Bowl game in Miami against the two-time defending champion, uh, Georgia Bulldogs. Everybody watch that and be proud of Brayden. I also want, um, I, uh, the, the, that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kalavich. Any other comments from the public?
Hi, Brian Gross, eight thirty West Sixth Street. I just want to thank the entire board for their service. Uh, I've been watching you now for two and a half years. Some of it's been very entertaining. Um, and I'm kinda surprised Paul, Councilman Paul didn't come up with a point of order today because I don't see a police officer here. Thank you.
Now. Now.
Got you.
Good evening, Honorable Counsel Dakota Euler, seven eighteen Emma Street. Uh, the American flag is a symbol of freedom and liberty, which we Americans recite the Pledge of Allegiance. The colors on the flag each have a meaning. Red for valor and bravery, white for purity and innocence, blue for vigilance, perseverance and justice. On any particular day, someone might drive by the courthouse, post office or other government building and ask, why are the flags being flown at half mast? The half mast flag represents the day of remembrance or a national day of mourning. Excuse me. It might occur after the death of a governor, a Supreme Court justice or another dignitary. The flag at half mast might be ordered after a national disaster and a tradition on certain annual holidays of, of remembrance. The US president, like state governor, or the mayor of the District of Columbia can order flags to be fly at half mast. Proper protocol calls for the flag to be briskly, oh, excuse me, pulled up to the top of a flagpole staff before being lowered slowly to the half mast position. The term half mast means position of a flag when it is one half the distance between the top and the bottom of the staff. I am coming before you this evening because I find it troubling that the orders that have been inconsistently, inconsistently followed by departments of Michigan City. I ask that the incoming administration make an effort to streamline the information to department heads and the council people. If you see something, say something to that department. May God bless America and God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you, Mr. Euler. Any other comments from the public? Any comments from the council? Councilman Presbalinsky.
Yeah, Mr. President, uh, I have something that was given to, uh, given to me to be presented to, uh, Councilman Paul Presbalinsky. Uh, what I'm gonna give Paul is one of his, uh, campaign signs that Kathy Stransky had. And as a, uh, as a going away. As a going away souvenir. We all signed the, uh, campaign sign. So Paul can look at our signatures and think of us all the time. So there you go, brother.
Thank you.
Dr. Corr has got a nice signature, guy. I, I wanna thank you, uh. That was, uh. That was very thoughtful, thank you. Uh, I appreciate. I, I appreciate. I, I can. I can feel the love. Okay? So. I, I do have some comments, but. And I'm gonna, I, you know what? I gotta tell you this. I'm gonna hang that. Right now, I'm putting it in a big frame right next to that unsigned resolution. I love it. I, I love it.
There you go.
But give me some more, give me some more. You know, give me some more fuel, alright? I love it. And that, you know what? The point I'm making is when somebody's nasty, you just get more pumped on it, alright? Just get more pumped. You know, don't get mad. And that's another thing my father told me. Don't get mad. And don't hate. Hate destroys. And. That's the problem somebody has, not me, but I'm gonna use it as fuel. So, I mean, that's. That's, uh, I guess the lesson for the day. Not the letter for the day, the lesson for the day. But, but besides that, can I make some comments here real quick?
Real quick.
Okay. Referring to Scott's, uh. Garage? Yes. I, I was gonna say some things because I knew that the way it went down. I don't think them people should, I think those people should be reimbursed somehow. I think somebody needs to do something, but on top of that. Here's what I say about the inspection department. It's been a long time coming that, that that department needs to be revamped. Does the code needs, need to have a subcommittee on redoing the code? Because it is too complex. They made that book too complex to refer to. And you know what I'm talking about, Scott? It's like, it's like. It's a book that I think, uh. College student would have a problem going through. It, it really is. So, okay, with that being said. And you point well taken, safety problem on that corner. But my concern is this. I think that the planning department should have been. Make those people rebuild their garage. And that's what still should happen. That garage should be rebuilt and they should apply for a variance to, for their setbacks. Because even that twenty feet. That's crazy on that corner lot. So now, here's the whole thing. You got a corner lot? Guess what? You pay more taxes. Go talk to the, the township ass- assessor. I pay more taxes because I live on a corner lot. So does that give me? More rights to do things? No. According to the book, it gives me less rights to do things on what I want to build on that property. And I'm gonna be moving to build something on that property. It's gonna be beautiful. But it, but anyway, um. The, uh. Like what Brian Gross said, I saw there was no police officer today and I figured it's my last meeting. I'm not gonna be, you know, pointing a bunch of fingers. But that, that came out, I couldn't help it. So anyway, um. The, uh. Uh, comment. That I do want to make is that I went to, uh, Water Department meeting on when they were gonna talk about the, uh. 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 Memorandum of Understanding. And I was very disappointed at that meeting because they went right into it and didn't even ask for public comment. And they voted, and they voted on that thing. Did not even ask for public comment. And I'm sitting in the room and I'm the rep for the Water Department. Now. Something that needs to be addressed. You got a map tonight. And that map was for the, uh. Study to be done on that, on that train line going through, the railroad tracks going through Michigan City, which goes through the third ward, the second ward. The fifth ward. And, uh, sixth ward. Okay, I think it's very crucial that that gets, uh, started and done. That's why I brought the map. I told you I was gonna deliver the map. I delivered the map. The, uh. Trash issue. Which I talked to Don earlier today. And what Tom Kavalek, uh, has brought out about the timeframe. That was already brought up, I think, three meetings ago at the Board of Works. Cause I got him photographed at five o'clock in the morning in my neighborhood picking up recyclables. And Tom is correct, it's seven to eight. You can't start anything. It's in the book. Thank you, Tom. Um. On trash. I believe what Scott said tonight about not giving them any more authority is absolutely correct. Cause they don't know how to use their authority. Is that with this trash ordinance, I think there should be one trash ordinance and one only. In that the sanitary district is involved with it. Before they go out and give a permit to somebody and then they end up having to picking up the trash. Or tell them how much they're gonna rip down to tell them how big a, uh, content. A roll off they need or whatever they need to roll off or. You know, what they need to do there. So. I also think that we're missing the boat on this trash ordinance. That we, we got enough property on, uh. Hitchcock Road or Hitchcock Street on that property to develop a place or an area where the people could bring their, uh, yard waste. Their, if they're cutting down a tree, they can bring their tree there, they can separate it, they can do whatever. And they could bring their, uh, old electronics there, they're supposed to anyway. Or their refrigerators or whatever. Because what I fail to realize, and I said it before, is Mr. Kinsel was there and he made money off of these things. And we're not in the business to charge people. We're in the business of supplying a service and. Trying to, and I think that we can do this thing. And by consolidating it into one area, use less money. And use less people running around town picking up all this garbage. This isn't, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We really don't. I think we're, we're overdoing it with writing more ordinances. On and giving people power. I think that. It's an issue of being sustainability. Let's use that word that's everybody's using. We have a structure out there. Tell the sanitary district, let's use your property and let's come up with an idea to do, to do something. I talked to a couple people today about it. But really, when I was on. The county waste board. They had a facility that they did exactly that. They recycled wood and they sold it. And they ground it up for mulch, mulch. The, uh, I would imagine not the semi hardwoods and the hardwoods. That's what needs to be done. And we need to ask the solid waste district if they're gonna help us in this endeavor since our taxes levy was doubled. On from the solid waste board. That's what we need to do. So I leave you with those thoughts and hopefully something could get done. And I am, uh. Hopefully they don't have a meeting in the morning. Cause I have plans on going to the solid waste district and. Bring, bringing that up, how, how they can help us because heaven help me if they can't, they tell us they can't help us because it's. A county waste board supposed to help us. Alright? That's the whole initiative behind it. They're supposed to help us. We're not our own entity out there. And we don't need to reinvent the wheel. This isn't rocket scientists. Uh, rocket science, I mean, excuse me. And, uh, I think it falls right in to what we want to do on sustainability. You know, that's a catchphrase now, but it does have, uh. Some meaning when, when you get into it. And I think that'd help the sanitary district out. In turn, it'll help the street department out dealing with tree, uh, cuttings. I, I really do. You know, we'll get everything in one spot. Thank you. And, uh, thank everyone for all the accolades. And, uh. I, I, I really appreciate it. And I hope my wife doesn't watch this show because she'll go, gonna ask me about that one. But that's okay, it's all, it, it is, it's all good. And, and you know, a lot of people wouldn't know that.
Tree mics.
But what Angie and I had some, uh, good discussions and, uh. I think that. It, it, you know what? Conversation. Is good for the art of compromise. And that's one thing I have learned. Through my work wife and my regular wife is that you only, you have to learn how to compromise. And you may not get everything you want, but. If you know how to compromise, you can negotiate. That's the key. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Comments, any comments from the council? Councilman Don President?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just want to give a shout out to the Michigan City Park Department and the wonderful job and the beautiful job they have done. For the Christmas season with the, uh, decoration of Washington Park and the, uh, downtown area, uh, this year. For some reason, it looks a lot better than it has in the, uh, past. I know that they've redone quite a bit of the, uh. Creature and, uh, the characters down there and the, uh. They with LED lights, it really looks nice, I want to give a shout out to them. And also I just want to wish everybody in Michigan City, everybody on the city council, uh, a Merry Christmas. And a Happy New Year. And let's enjoy the holidays and get ready for twenty twenty-four. And I also want to thank the clerk's office. For taking care of the resolutions. And for getting the frames. And I want to thank the. Controller's office for paying for the, uh. Frames. Because the administration said they weren't paying for the frames. Uh, for whatever reason, and I'll just leave it at that, so. With that, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. God bless everyone and let's just enjoy the, uh, the season. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Dr. Corr.
Yeah, Mr. President, I want to, uh, thank all the city employees for the work they do in keeping us safe. And, uh, secure and the streets clean. So I want to thank them all and wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Corr. Uh, uh, Councilman Mack.
Uh, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, all that good stuff. And, uh, happy birthday, eighty-fourth birthday to my dad. Uh, I still got both my parents, I'm very happy and blessed to have it. You know, so. Been a good ride, Dad. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Dyche.
Uh, yeah, same thing, uh, happy holidays to everybody, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Um, again, um, just appreciate the entire council and the four years that we've had. And working with the clerk's office, our attorneys, um, the public who continues to come to these meetings and speak. Tommy, we're always having a, a word for us, um, at every council meeting. We miss him when he's not here. And, um, our, uh, swearing in ceremony, this is gonna be a little different and I just want to make sure I. I, um, announced that, um, the swearing in ceremony is on November. I mean, November, December thirtieth. I went backwards. December thirtieth at eleven AM at the Blue Chip Casino. We did, um. There will be a link to register, but there is an overflow. Uh, I want to make sure all the council people, um, were able to get their folks registered, but the public is invited. Um, this is gonna be different, so we have a private breakfast with, um. The council people and the department heads just to, to give that sense of team. And, and moving forward, um. With a few speakers prior to the swearing in ceremony. And, and that's just to show a sign of solidarity and unity within our community on what we want to get done. Um, and, uh. I, I will say this about, we can talk about departments and, and all of that. I, I think. I've been in situations over time in, in multiple companies and corporations where, um, departments. Uh, become who they are because of lack of leadership. I'm not saying that they're bad people. But when you are out there as a renegade doing what you think you're doing. Um, based on what you know and what you've seen previously. I think you all need to give me some grace and time to help develop some of these people. Uh. And if they can't be developed, they'll leave. I mean, they will, but. I, I just think that I've been in situations where there are good people who have just been beaten down over time. And, um, have not had the resources or tools to do what they need to do. So I'm gonna ask that because as a leader, it's my responsibility to help develop people to become who they can be. Or to find a place for them to go. If that's not the place for them. And so, um. I just want some grace on that, um. From the public because it's gonna take a little time. It didn't happen overnight, it happened over a long period of time. And, uh, and I just want that. So, um, so it's gonna be a joyous day on the thirtieth, um. We have a whole day planned, um. And, and it's exciting because I can sense the energy that people are giving off and I'm so. I'm honored and humbled that, um, we are moving forward. Um. We are filling up those seats. And I'm honored to be able to allow the new council members to be able to be front and center. And to be sworn in, the clerk, the clerk's office to participate and be sworn in for the whole entire community. This is a community thing. And I'm just glad that we're able to do it. So we have four hundred seats, y'all, we're already at half without even giving it to the public. So that's a beautiful thing. That means that the community is behind moving the city forward. And it's time that people understand that, uh, we want everybody to have a say. Whether you're eighteen or whether you're eighty-four. Um. We need everybody's input in, in making things happen. And, and like I said, it'll be bumpy at first, but, um. I'm very confident that, um, people want to do good. People don't want to do bad. And, um, sometimes they just need some encouragement and there are gonna be a lot more announcements. Now they're gonna come fast and furious, so you're gonna see a lot of announcements over the next few days. But I, I, I just want everybody to take that in and understand that. Um, it's the holiday season and people want to do what's best, they do. They just sometimes don't know how. Or they've been in a situation where they left out there to do it for themselves. And, and I want all of us to understand that, so. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, I look forward to seeing the public. Uh, we'll get more information out, um, over the weekend, um, but it is eleven AM. The doors are open at ten forty-five at the Blue Chip Casino in the Fremont, um, Ballroom. So we will see you next, a week from Saturday. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I got something I want to say quickly.
Councilman Preswalinsky?
Quickly, I just, I just want to offer that everybody on this holiday season, or ask them. To give prayers for, uh, the Ukraine and Israel. And, uh. And the, uh, crisis on the border. To, to resolve that. And, and I gotta say that it, it. I, I stand with Israel. And we need. To get something done and I hope that everybody can. Give, give us, give us, give them some prayers. You know, because what's going on? If, if you get into the geopolitics. With giving this terrorist group money. with giving this terrorist group money to fund this other terrorist group, this is a bad situation. And we need to pray, we need to really pray for, for these people. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council?
Move for a German?